Well, it's another beautiful evening in Pueblo, Colorado. Today is Monday, October 28th, 2024. The time is 7:08. And I now call to order the regular city council meeting. Uh, second order of business is the invocation. Is Pastor Scott or Reverend Scott here? He's a no-show. That's never happened before. Stand with us and we'll have the invocation if you want, and then we'll have the pledge of allegiance. God, thank you for bringing us together here today. Thank you for bringing all the people that wish to participate in their government. We love you. We worship you. And we're so thankful of all the gifts that this city and our community has received from your graciousness. God, grant us the wisdom to make great decisions and to do your will as we proceed through this council meeting tonight. We ask these things in your name, God, and in the name of your only son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Bible of the United States of America. As a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need to check, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
I feel that I need to warn you, Mr. President. It is going to switch in the middle of the meeting potentially, so.
I didn't hear you.
We may switch in the middle of the meeting potentially, just so you're forewarned.
Okay.
Mark Aliff.
Here.
Brett Boston.
Here.
Dennis Flores.
Here.
Roger Gomez. Joe Latino.
Here.
Regina Maestri. Here. Sarah Martinez.
Everyone is here, so that's a good thing. We now move into, uh, special recognitions. We're going to do a proclamation for Code Compliance Month. Let's get the code people up here. Come on down. Bite those shirts. Every side.
All right.
We'll just fill it up. We're going to take pictures and hoot and holler. Exactly. So this is a proclamation for Code Compliance Month, October 2024. Whereas Pueblo's code enforcement officers provide for safety, health, and welfare of our citizens through the enforcement of local codes or ordinances facing various issues of building, zoning, housing, nuisances, environmental, health, and life safety. And whereas code enforcement officers often have a challenging and demanding role and seldom receive recognition for the job that they do improving living and working conditions for residents and businesses in our community. And whereas code enforcement officers are dedicated and highly qualified professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing and ensuring safety and preserving property values through knowledge and application of housing, zoning, and nuisance codes and ordinances. And whereas code enforcement officers have a highly visible and interactive role in our community while providing quality customer service and excellence. And whereas the mayor and city council want to recognize and honor code enforcement officers and administrative support within our city and bring awareness to the importance of code enforcement within our community. Now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Pueblo, Colorado, by the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as Code Compliance Month in the city of Pueblo and join in recognizing and expressing our appreciation for the dedication and service by Pueblo's Code Enforcement Division and urge our citizens to voice their appreciation to this group for their work in enhancing the quality of life in our community. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Pueblo, Colorado, to be affixed this 28th day of October 2024. Congratulations. Well, that's a tough job what they have. We're either, we either love them or we hate them, right? We love them when they get the neighbor's, uh, house cleaned up and we hate them when it's our house that needs cleaned up. But what a great job you guys do and we couldn't do it without you and we appreciate everything that you do. And I know the council is very appreciative and I know the mayor is very appreciative and we appreciate everything that you do. Is that enough appreciations?
Thank you. Thank you.
And now we have a proclamation for Pueblo Water Day, the 150th anniversary. Joe Servie is going to accept this, right? Hey, Joe. So this is a proclamation for Pueblo Water Day, 150th anniversary, October 31st, 2024. Whereas settlers convened at the confluence of the Arkansas River and Fountain Creek in 1870 and form what is now Pueblo, Colorado. And whereas these pioneers from across the plains and prairies were drawn to southeastern Colorado in the mid 1800s because of water, our most precious natural resource. And whereas the Pueblo citizenry at the time recognized that a reliable source of water was necessary for fire protection, public health, and economic vitality, voted to build the Holly Pump Station on the corner of Fourth and Grand in Pueblo. And whereas water flowed through the pipes of the Pueblo Waterworks System for the first time at the Holly Pump Station on October 31st, 1874, establishing the foundation for the city to be the economic hub for southeastern Colorado. And 150 years later, the city waterworks system continues to meet the needs of the city. And whereas the Board of Waterworks of Pueblo, Colorado, Pueblo Water, was subsequently established by the city charter for the city of Pueblo, Colorado, to continue operation of the city's waterworks. And Pueblo Water maintains the tradition of providing the community with the highest quality water at the lowest possible cost. And whereas Pueblo Water today provides more than 113,500 customers with water 24 hours a day, seven days a week, every single day of the year. Now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Pueblo, Colorado, by the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim October 31st, 2024, as Pueblo Water Day in the city of Pueblo, Colorado, and encourage the citizens of Pueblo to join us in celebrating 150 years of excellence and recognizing this organization for the contributions it makes to our community. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Pueblo, Colorado, to be affixed this 31st day of October 2024. Congratulations.
Yeah, I just want to thank you. Talk about government. The contract in 1874 was to be concluded by November 1st. So on October 31st, they finally ran water through it. So on this Thursday, it's 150 years we've had water in Pueblo.
It's amazing. Amazing. Okay, now we move on to IMF, which is our public forum. We'll start with our, our speaker on Zoom, Sarah Short. Are you there, Sarah?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Thank you for coming tonight. And yeah, five minutes.
Thank you so much. Oh. See, it's mine. Video working. Okay. I'll just do audio if that's all right.
That's fine.
In early 2023, I testified at the state Capitol regarding a bill regarding crisis pregnancy centers. And at that time, I was 22 weeks pregnant. And I sat through an almost 12-hour hearing to have a turn to plead on the behalf of unborn life, like the life I was carrying in my belly at the. Fast forward to July 2023, and I delivered maybe almost a month prematurely. Spent three days in the NICU and watching his breathing and heartbeat fluctuate for hours on end is one of the hardest things I've lived through so far. There's nothing like seeing your child buried under a pile of tubes and monitors, especially if that's how you meet him for the first time. He fought through it and today he is a healthy and happy 15-month-old. But somewhere in the fog of those awful couple of days, I remember looking in the hospital. There are babies who are aborted here in Colorado who are just as developed and just as perfect as he is. I, my heart-wrenching thinking out baby about women who feel the baby tick and endure the morning sun, it's just like I said, but they never get their baby. And instead, because of a. Stops. I read the stats. I know they try to soothe people into thinking that late-term abortions are few and far between and medically necessary, but every single one that occurs is a tragedy. And my beautiful premature boy is a testament to the worth and the value of these unborn babies. But I'm here tonight to ask you to please reintroduce the ordinance to make Pueblo a sanctuary city for the unborn instead of their cemetery. Thank you.
Is that it, Sarah?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Uh, Ted Freeman. Hello, Mr. Freeman. Thank you for coming.
Is it on? Okay. Well, as they say, it's getting old for the birds. That's why it takes me a long time to get up here. But one of the things I want to point out to start with, I want to sort of talk about the economy. That's the sort of the same thing they were talking about in the work session. And, uh, just want to let you know that I've been coming to the city council meetings for about 20 years now. And I've heard a lot of budget talks and things of that nature. And it's always been, uh, never been happy with the budget. Matter of fact, that's why I started coming to the city council meeting, because the way they were spending money. Well, up through the, you know, the city managers and the city, uh, mayors and so forth, they were doing the same thing. But one of the things I'm very pleased to see that there's changes made in tonight's budget or today's budget that's being announced, uh, that we're making some changes, which is great. I think, you know, uh, we need to do that because we don't have the money to, to waste. Over the time that I've been coming to these meetings, the city council has been responsible for wasting millions and millions of dollars of our citizens' money. Now, I'm not blaming you at this point in time. But that's the previous councils. And the reason why I say that with reference to the ways that this is the involvement with the city council and getting together with PEDCO. You probably all heard maybe of PEDCO. They were supposed to bring in, uh, companies to bring up primary jobs. But they were spending millions and millions of dollars to do that. But we didn't always make a lot of millions of dollars. We just lost it. We lost a lot of the companies that they brought in. And they were bringing in companies that had low wages. That's one of the reasons why, you know, the, we still have a lot of poverty here in Pueblo. A situation that we need to change. We need to improve the quality of life. And I get a little upset about some of the city council meetings that say, hey, we've got to take care of all these tourists and things of that nature. I really wish I could hear them say, you know, Ted, we've got to take care of the people of Pueblo and improve their quality of life. Because that's what you guys should be leaving for. Not for tourists, but for the people. And that's one of the things that I get concerned about. So my situation is a feeling is that somehow we've got to stop giving money away. Now next year, okay, the half-cent sales tax money, which we have about $60 million saved up. If we could repurpose that money, we could do a lot of things. Childcare centers, community centers, police substations, all kinds of things. But it's going to be up to you guys to be smart. Are we going to keep the half-cent sales tax money going? If we do, we've got to convince the people of Pueblo that you guys are going to be honest with them and say, hey, we've got projects that you could, you're going to before you, we're going to improve our education. We're going to improve our safety. We're going to improve, you know, our quality of life, our infrastructure, our roads and everything else. With $60 million, we could do a lot with that. But it's going to take you guys to do it. You know, and our friend, you know, over here, you know, about the tourists, you know, he, he borrowed like, you know, 14.2 million, $4 million.
Thanks, Mr. Freeman. Your time's up.
And I thank you for.
Thank you. Uh, Catherine Castillo. Hi, thank you for coming.
Allow me to speak. First of all, I'd like to, um, say that I'm proud of our mayor, the work that she's doing here in Pueblo. Also, I know, uh, city council, um, I'm sure they have hard decisions to make. However, I just want to address the issue of the abortion clinic here in Pueblo. I was kind of disappointed that I thought we had till the 28th. Um, the city council wasn't going to vote on this until today. And it's already been voted on. And, uh, I did send an email to the city council members. I don't know if you received it. That I know that a couple of the city council members were concerned about suits against, uh, the, against the city because we wouldn't have an abortion clinic here. Um, we didn't have an abortion clinic for 10 years and there were no suits. Also, um, I would think there would be more risk of, of suits because, uh, there's a medical doctor there, I understand. So, uh, women are going to possibly get botched abortions. And being that abortion is allowed up to the ninth month, um, I'm sure people are aware of the procedure, uh, partial birth, um, where they allow the, the child to be born, just poke its head out and they poke the scissors in the back of its neck and suck out the brains so the child would die. This is a horrible procedure. And it's still, as I understand it, still performed on a, a child in nine months, um, being aborted. So these are some horrible things that we have to consider. And actually, I know you already voted on it, but I would really encourage everybody to consider the three, uh, um, issues that are on, uh, 79, issue 79, um, that's going to be on the ballot that, uh, there will be no parental, no parental consent for abortions when the, the, the young woman is under 18. And taxpayers will be paying for the abortions. And there are people that come out of, come out of state or I guess, or out of our city to come and have abortions here. We'd be paying for those. Also, um, up to nine months. And, and I don't see how anyone can, you know, look at that and not shudder at, you know, imagine a child ready to be born and it's, it's killed, you know, as it's coming out. So I, I just really kind of disappointed because I did think that we had till today uh, for the city council to vote on this. And, uh, I am, you know, disappointed about that. And also, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'd like to encourage everybody to consider, you know, sincerely consider, uh, voting, uh, no on 79. Because these issues, these are, you know, a lot of people saying, well, it's a moral issue. It is. It's a moral issue. We don't kill, you know, murder is wrong, you know? And however, that's what we're doing to these children, you know, it's murder. That's what it is, you know? Whether it's a, uh, three months pregnancy or nine months pregnancy, it's, it's still a child. And fetus comes from a word that means baby. So whether we try to make it don't sound as serious because we say fetus, it means baby. There's a baby in there. So, um, I'd just like to encourage everybody to vote no on 79 and consider thoughtfully, you know, what does abortion really mean? And, and, uh, we, we said the pledge of allegiance under God and we had prayer. Do we really answer to God considering abortion issue? Are we really answering to God for it? Because what does he think about it? So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Christine Orr. Is Christine Orr in the audience? Okay, we'll move on to, uh, yeah. Hi Christine, thanks for coming.
Thank you for having me. I'm going to be a mockingbird. First of all, I want to thank, uh, our new mayor, Heather. I've lived in Pueblo most of my life and I've never seen the improvement we've seen, we're seeing right now with Heather as our new mayor. So thank you, Heather, for the job that you're doing. I'm going to, the reason I said I'm going to be a mockingbird is because Kathy Castillo that just talked is my oldest sister. And I told her at the District 60 meeting not too long ago about children changing their names and not having parental, parental consent. Where did we lose our morals and values as adults to see and teach our children the right ways and the right things to do? We didn't become a country under one nation, under God, because we didn't do the right thing. We pledge allegiance to our God as being an undivisible nation, indivisible. What does that mean? We prayed before this, this meeting too, just like Kathy said. Do our prayers mean anything to us? They mean something to our Father in heaven. They truly do, whether you believe or not. This isn't a religious battle. God is alive and he sees everything and he knows everything. He knows all the decisions each one of you made on that abortion clinic. He's the one who created life. He stands for life. You make our Creator cry when a baby dies. Everyone in this room had a mother that made a decision to keep her child. There was one time in our country a while back ago when abortion wasn't even thought of as even as part of the law. It was only done for the, for the mother's health. That's the only reason we would take a baby's life. And now it's just nonchalantly, oh, I don't want the baby because I had it by the wrong man. It's a woman's right? No, it is not. It's not a woman's right about a life. It never has been. And if it had been, then years ago, we would already have abortion in our country and we didn't. Kathy was right. 10 years ago, we had a, a Planned Parenthood in, over in the mall and it shut down. I, I don't know anything about that. But for 10 years, Pueblo didn't have an abortion clinic. The people of Pueblo didn't get abortions. All of a sudden, we get one across the street from St. Mary Corwin Hospital. We don't even have a doctor over there performing abortions. And I don't believe those are the women from Pueblo that are getting the abortions. I think it's people from other cities. Because the women in Pueblo didn't even have an abortion for 10 years. Now we have a city council. I don't know who you are who voted to keep that abortion clinic in. When is that ever right to commit murder? That's one of our God's 10 commandments. Thou shalt not kill. When you hear a heartbeat in that, in the woman's, in the womb, that baby's alive. Thou shalt not kill. I'm not going to answer to God and I'm voting no on 79 because I'm, my money out of my pocket isn't going to pay for somebody else to kill a child. I know that's a controversial subject to a lot of people, when is life begin? It's not up to us as, as mankind. It is up to our God in heaven to say when life begins. And that's unconception. On the moment of conception, it is not any of our decision. And I ask you, you can pray in front of all the people of Pueblo. Do your prayers really mean something to you? Do you really feel a heartfelt word to our Father in heaven when you're praying? Or are you just doing that to, to suffice the people in this room to say, oh, we're going to pray to God? I hope the Lord hears you. And I hope and I pray for our city that he changes every one of us. One of you said there's changes being made in Pueblo. It's not about the money. It's about principalities and concepts and belief systems in what's right and doing the right thing. Not going against just because everybody else said it's right. We don't stand with the, with the crowd. We stand on the truth. And our God is the truth. That's where we learned it from. We didn't learn it from our parents.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for listening to me.
Margot Harriman? Is Margot Harriman here? Thank you for coming.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I wasn't able to speak a couple of weeks ago, so I'm here to share my story. My name's Margot Harriman, but tonight it doesn't really matter what my name is. I represent one in four women who have had an abortion. I made my choice 39 years ago. After my procedure, the abortion industry and their support to get me through my pain, regret, and grief, they were nowhere to be found. Most of us mourned silently, full of shame, regret, self-loathing at times. And we suffered alone. 81% of women who have had abortions experience physical, emotional, psychological, and spiritual harm. Eighty-one percent of women who have had abortions experience physical, emotional, psychological, and spiritual harm. One in seven women go to the emergency room. I know that God, I know Jesus is my personal Savior, and I know he's forgiven me, but he doesn't take away the consequences. So there's grandbabies. There's my son that I won't have, grandbabies that I won't have, great-grandchildren that won't be here, citizens that won't be here because I killed that many generations. The industry calls abortion healthcare. Healthcare is defined as efforts made to maintain, restore, or promote someone's physical, mental, or emotional well-being. There are two patients in an abortion. One is tortured, maimed, dismembered, and murdered. And eighty-one percent of the other patients are harmed. The abortion industry is also not regulated. These facts tell me that abortion is not healthcare. So I'm speaking out today to empower others like me because we are all silent, because we're shamed. We need to stand up and be heard so that women don't make the same mistakes. So that city councils make the right choice and close abortion clinics in their city. They are the lesser magistrate, but when the government is allowing us to kill our children, it's your duty as a city council to protect your people. Abortion is a spiritual issue. It's not a political issue. Abortion's been around for a very long time in the Bible. It talks about abortion and how God hates it. In fact, God couldn't even think of it. That's how evil it is. The ultimate question that we need to answer as Christians, because I assume we're all Christians because we all prayed before, is who do we follow? Men or God? What does the Bible say about abortion? What does the Bible say about the humanity of the baby in the womb? Do we believe that God is the giver and taker of life? Psalm one thirty-nine says, "You knit me together in my mother's womb. I am fearfully and wonderfully made." Also, we know the ten commandments, thou shall not murder. Actually, our society is built on that. Thou shall not murder. As a civilized society, we can all agree that it's wrong to intentionally kill an innocent human being. And who is more innocent than a baby? Is abortion murder? Is baby, is the baby in the womb alive? Well, we can also look at science. The baby has a heartbeat. The baby is growing. There's two different DNAs. So it's not my body. It's not my choice. Both parents are human, so we know that that baby inside is a human being. Embryologists are scientists that study the development of embryos in mammals. And embryologists have concluded that life begins at conception. So we need to listen to our scientists. They are the ones that know as well. On our ballots, there's an amendment seventy-nine that aims to enshrine abortion into our Colorado constitution. It's an extreme measure. It cements abortion through birth. It gives every woman the right to kill their child. Abortion will be taxpayer-funded. Twenty-five to forty-seven percent of the women that are getting abortions in Colorado are coming in from out of state. So our taxpayer dollars will be funding those abortions as well. It'll be funding their hotel stays, their meals, their travel. We'll be paying for that. And where will that money be coming from? Some other program. It also removes parental notifications so children can have abortions without their parents' consent. And it also, I believe, that it will also do harm to our Pregnancy Resource Centers, who are telling women the truth. They're showing women the heartbeat. They're letting them see their baby so they know what they're actually feeling.
Thank you.
Say no on amendment seventy-nine. Thank you.
Kozia Mendoza? Thank you for coming.
Hello, my name is Kozia Mendoza, and I'm here representing Southern Colorado Harm Reduction Association, a nonprofit providing essential resources for the Pueblo community. And I stand here in deep frustration, speaking not just as a resident, but as a witness to the harmful impact this proposal budget has on the very soul of the city. The heart of Pueblo, our arts, our zoo, our nonprofits supporting vulnerable people, and yes, the Latino Chamber of Commerce and our families, is being sacrificed. When we cut these community pillars, we're ripping out our history, our culture, and the support networks. Yet as we cut strips of us from the community support, we see police budget increase and pay raises in the mayor's office. When we are told there's no money for our essential services, it's a slap in the face to see these same departments benefit at the expense of the important Pueblo nonprofits. Every struggling artist, every family looking for safety and a brighter future. All of this while happening, while taxpayer money is wasted on ignorant lawsuits targeting harm reduction services that directly support Pueblo's LGBT community and those facing homelessness. Wasted money being spent on sweeps to remove homeless encampments. If we truly prioritize our community's health and well-being, let's refocus our budget to protect these nonprofits. These are the backbone of Pueblo. This budget isn't about a deficit. It's about priorities. Pueblo's people deserve better. Support for families and spaces that inspire growth and resources that nurture our community. I urge you to reconsider this proposal. Invest in us, the community, not in more enforcement and salaries. Your choices tonight will tell us if you're truly the people of Pueblo. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to council member and mayor commentary. Mayor Graham?
Thank you, President Aliff. Just want to remind the community that tomorrow night and Wednesday night, the city will be hosting the commentary period for Black Hills from five to eight o'clock. I encourage the citizens to come and speak about what an eighteen percent increase would do to your electric bill. Again, that's Tuesday and Wednesday from five to eight here at City Hall. Saturday night was a great night at the Riverwalk. There was several families, several thousands of families doing the trick-or-treat events. It was person-to-person. You could barely even walk. So it was great to see the community come out and bring their little ones and take pictures and food trucks, et cetera. And then, want to thank Andrew Hayes, Public Works, the city staff, C and C disposal, and our volunteers that showed up on Saturday to help with the cleanup. Marty, who is sitting right behind me, came out and showed up and helped direct traffic for people to dump their trash. So we had a very successful event. We had three different sites where people could dump CSU Pueblo, the fairgrounds, and then we had a green waste site at Recycle Works. So there wasn't a line all day. It went very quickly, and it was very well planned. And so thank you, and thank you to all the citizens who participated. And I'm sure that the council knows at this point, but the city started the cleanup of the jungle today. We were out there. We have a work plan for the EPA. We are prepared to be down there in the safest way for our employees and for the people that are currently still down there tonight. You're going to see an emergency ordinance on the agenda for the shelter at seven-ten Fourth Street. And that tomorrow morning, if this passes, I will be passing a declaration for the rest of the week in order to house people. We have bed spaces ready. We're able to shelter an additional forty-nine people at the seven-ten building. The fire department came out and set up the cots for us. We purchased blankets today. And so if individuals are needing additional housing that are coming out of the jungle or anywhere in the city, the rescue mission that the city is now operating is ready to take people on. So thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Counselor Latino?
Excuse me. I just want to commend the folks that are here to present on the anti-abortion issue. I want you to know that that is something that I wholeheartedly agree with in terms of vote for no. That's not something that I was raised to support, having been raised the way I was. And so when we're doing those things and somehow we're affecting the life of a child, potential life of a child, and there are means and methods to protect individuals, and those are the means and methods that need to be used, but I'm not for abortion. And in addition to that, this community is a great community. I didn't have to come back here, but I did because of the fact that it is the home of heroes. And I remember growing up to be able to walk down the streets of Pueblo at six o'clock at night, and my parents never worried for my brother, myself, or anybody when I walked from Pueblo Catholic High School here after football, basketball, or baseball practice. It's a different story today. This country's in a different paradigm as well. So Pueblo is Pueblo. It's the home of heroes. Jerry Murphy, whom I got to know because I worked in the Santa Fe Public Schools for three years, and he was a city councilman, was a great man. He was a proprietor business owner of a big bowling alley and restaurant. And I think about him, and I think about what he did for this community, as did the other three Congressional Medal of Honor winners. And there's not many cities the size of New York that have four Congressional Medal of Honor winners, but Pueblo, Colorado does. So we need to take into consideration the good that this community provides, presents, and we need to move in that direction. And as it relates to abortion, that's one of the things we need not to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bond, James Bond, I mean Bossa. Counselor Gomez. Counselor Martinez.
You know, being in this position for three years, sometimes it can be a bit discouraging. And I found myself inspired this weekend when I was volunteering at the cleanup. And one of the members that we see so often at public forum shows up to volunteer the whole day, the whole day, from beginning to end. And I felt myself inspired by Ms. Marty Harvey because she put her money where her mouth is. You know, she comes to public forum and tells us, you know, what we need to be doing better. But then she takes it a step farther and says, you know what? I'm going to help my community in the way that I can, and she volunteered. And I felt myself really inspired by you this weekend, Ms. Marty. And I hope that her actions will inspire everyone else just to do one good thing, one, just one thing that's good or that can help someone else. And maybe that one small action will inspire someone else, and then maybe they'll do one good thing. So thank you for inspiring me. Hopefully, you'll inspire more people. And hopefully, by the next cleanup in, you know, next spring, we have like five hundred volunteers because Marty inspired everyone to volunteer. And go turn your ballots in.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Flores?
Yes. Two years ago, the city council gave me the authority to put a project in place called the Pueblo Economic Dashboard. And I sold it to the city council on the basis that we would fund it for only two years. And this year, it was the year that we no longer have to fund that economic dashboard because I had agreed to move it forward and allow the business community to take it over. And it was such a success, but it's an example of how we can jumpstart things but not continue having to fund it. And I'm really grateful that Petco has taken over the responsibility, and the business community has come forth and given them the amount of money that it's going to take to continue it on a quarterly basis. And as a result of that economic dashboard, that is kind of the theme tonight. We won't have to fund the one hundred and fifty thousand. It was really seventy-five per year. And so that goes back into the general fund, and so maybe that's a little bit of good news. But on November the eighth, we will hold an economic forum at Pueblo Community College where we will have the third quarter dashboard along with Dr. Tatiana Bailey and as the economist that does this for us, talking about what they see as far as the information that we need to be making better decisions in Pueblo. We'll also have Suzie Miller, who is the executive director of the Colorado Rural Consortium. And she'll talk about the economic problem with our workforce development. And I encourage all of you to get on the city website or the Petco website and make your reservations. There is no cost to the economic forum. We'll be providing breakfast, a full breakfast to anybody that shows up. It'll be from seven until nine-thirty, so anybody that has to get back to work, they'll be able to do it. So I encourage you to come to this function. It's going to be very informative. I didn't plan it this way, but it'll be right after the election. I'm sure that we'll have a lot of discussion about the election and also about what we see for the future of Pueblo. So that's all I have, and thank you, President Aliff.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Maestri?
We've been hearing a lot on priorities lately. You know, we're talking about budgets. We're talking about policies. And the disconnect is because people people are different. They have different beliefs. They have different thoughts. They value different things. And that's where we become a little divisive in nature. And I just want to say that whatever your priorities are, always stand for your priorities. Stand for what you believe in. Stand for your value system. You know, some of us have had good foundations, and some of us have had not-so-good foundations. You know, learn from your experiences. Try to do better. And always just try to do the right thing. And that's all I have to say for this evening.
Thank you, Counselor. I had the good fortune of last Friday going to the Convention Center and welcoming USA and World Boxing to Pueblo. And I just want to share the significance of this event. It's the under-nineteen World Championships at seventeen and eighteen-year-olds. There's twenty-five countries in Pueblo. And they're here from last Saturday until next Saturday. The championships will be on Saturday. You can go over there for ten bucks. I think they start every day at three o'clock. For ten bucks, you can get in, and you literally see the best boxing in the world when it comes to amateur boxing. And let me tell you, Team USA has twelve boxers there. All twelve of them can win a championship. There's just people from all over the world. But for them to come to Pueblo, USA Boxing is in Colorado Springs. For them to come to Pueblo, what the Chamber of Commerce has done to get that here and the Convention Center working with them to put it together. When you walk in there, that whole Convention Center is just transformed into a fantastic boxing venue. And it's my understanding they're coming back in April with another championship, but it is literally world-class boxing that you just can't get anywhere but on TV. But now you can get it in Pueblo. I highly recommend it. It's a lot of fun. And you get to see some quality, some quality sports. And now we'll move into the review of the agenda. Page one. Page two. Page three. Page four. And I get an approval of the agenda.
President Aliff, I make a motion. Um, President Nayle, if I make a motion to approve the agenda. And I, I make a motion to approve the agenda as distributed.
Sir, second.
Second.
Any questions? Let's call for the action. It passes seven zero. About a reading and approval of the amendments.
Motion to dispense, motion to ex, to dispense with the reading and approval of the minutes of the regular meeting dated October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four as distributed.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any questions? Let's call for the action. Voting. It passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, we now move into public hearings, item K one.
Item K one, proposed twenty twenty-five annual budget. This public hearing is held for the purchase of receipt, for the purpose of receiving testimony as it pertains to the twenty twenty-five proposed annual budget for the requirements of section seven dash nine of the Charter for the City of Pueblo.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I want to remind everybody in the audience, remind city council, this is nothing but testimony from the public. City council's not involved. Mayor's not involved. This is literally the community's opportunity to give their five-minute, uh, testimony on the budget. So I'm going to ask, is there anyone here wishing to speak on the budget? Come on down. Give your name, and you have five minutes. Thanks for coming.
I, um, I'm Ken Dante. And I wanted to talk about some things that the city does with their employees that are good for our budget. I'm involved in the Energy Commission. One of the things that we're doing, um, um, we, we have a part-time employee who helps facilitate this and has brought in way more money in grants than his salary costs the city. So number one, um, this is George Andrews, our time employee. Um, uh, so he's, he's doing a wonderful job. We, uh, are bringing forward, and it's already passed in ordinance, a energy performance contract, which will improve our energy efficiency of our city buildings. Maybe bring in renewable energy to power those buildings, saving the city a lot of money. These things won't go forward unless it saves money. Um, uh, George also pointed out an opportunity. Um, uh, a lot of the grants have been involved in bringing in EV chargers. Uh, these chargers are now, they were free up until the end of September. Now they're, um, they're, they're being, um, uh, uh, there's a charge of, um, twenty-five cents a kilowatt hour, which is about the cost of Black Hills Energy. It's expensive, but it's still a pretty good deal. Um, this is a possible business for the city to generate revenue. Um, and I think the city may want to look into this, uh, as an opportunity. Uh, if we raise those rates a little bit, it's not going to be any different than any other city. Um, and, and maybe we can make some money on this, uh, or turn it into an enterprise. So I wanted to bring that idea up as a, as a possible source of revenue. Rather than cut, 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 let's look at how we can increase the revenue, I guess is my point. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone, is there anyone else wishing to speak on the budget? Come on down. Just state your name.
Good evening, Mayor Graham and members of city council. Uh, I'm Noah Comerford. I serve as the president and CEO of the Latino Chamber of Commerce here in Pueblo. And I'm here tonight to speak against the proposed budget as it relates to nonprofits here in our great city on behalf of our staff, Board of Directors, our foundation board, and most importantly, our membership, which is comprised of five hundred and fifty business members with over one hundred of those being nonprofits. As we know, nonprofit organizations have played an integral role in the growth of Pueblo in a variety of different, uh, sectors, industries in our great city for many, many years. In fact, Pueblo features one of the most diverse nonprofit sectors throughout our state and certainly throughout our country. The Latino Chamber has been serving Pueblo and more specifically the Latino, the small business and the minority communities of Pueblo for forty-five years. We are very active when it comes to economic development, business development, advocacy for our small businesses, the marketing of Pueblo, as well as providing hands-on resources that are extremely critical for our members. On a day-to-day basis, we assist businesses with marketing, graphic design, networking, education, translation services, paths, pathways to help them take their next journey in their business cycle, and hands-on resources at our office, such as a green screen, a photo box, laptops to rent out, laptops to use in the office and much more, including a three D printer that we just got access to. In terms of events and programs, we host more than fifty different events throughout the year, with twenty of those being educational workshops for our business members. Of the funding we have been grateful to receive from the city, this year, one of our newest developments is being able to put on our Dia de los Marcos costume parade, which will be taking place this Saturday at our great Pueblo River Walk. We have done a lot of effective marketing for this event. We have a lot of great elements that we hope to appeal to thousands of people within and outside of Pueblo. And one of my favorite parts is that we have also given the opportunity for students in both District sixty and District seventy, the and the opportunity to have free admission to the costume parade. Another area we have used a large portion of our city funds for is adding one more full-time staff position, which has allowed us to build to a team of six people. And for historical context, in twenty twenty and even just before the pandemic hit, we had a staff, a full-time staff of two and a half employees. So that, that's been a huge part of our growth. That's been a great way for us to leverage, be able to serve more members, be able to be more present at events, not only in Pueblo, but the Southern Colorado region as a whole. And over the last couple of years, we've also prioritized making sure that all of them are, all, all of our materials are in bilingual format. We never want language to be a reason why we can't help you or serve you. Along with our great work, an area that I, as well as our entire organization, takes a lot of pride in, and we hope that we set the example for is our financial transparency. Every year we perform an end-of-financial audit from a CPA firm, file our nine ninety, return on time, and make sure that all of our monthly financial statements are within GAAP guidelines. Every cent that comes into our organization, every cent that goes out of our office, our Board of Directors at every single monthly meeting is well aware of that. And I also want to add that our finance committee signs off on all of our financial statements on a monthly basis to ensure that all of us have accountability and transparency from top down. The City of Pueblo does hold and has held an ex officio spot on our board for many years. So this, this allows the city or the representative, the sitting representative at the time to give us insight and feedback on what areas we could better serve Pueblo. And it also allows us to give updates on where we're at in terms of events, programs, and impact. Uh, I know my time is winding down. So as I wrap up, I just want to ask, can we, can we do a better job of making sure that all of us are in this together? If we're winning together, I hope that if we have to lose, we do it together. Thank you.
I do. Is there anyone else I'd like to speak on the budget? Welcome.
Hello. Thank you for having me. Um, most of you know me, but for those of you who don't, I'm Dr. Nicole Ferguson. I'm the Executive Director, Mariposa Center for Safety. It was approximately eight months ago when I sat in this very chair explaining to you the crisis our center was experiencing. I sit here today, happy to report to you that with thanks of your help and others in the community, we have turned that crisis around. We now have money in our bank account. We've put a deposit down on a new boiler and our programs are thriving. Sadly, the other side of that coin, it seems as though that help was a one-time thing and the city doesn't seem to think they should continue to provide support for the work that we do. I say this because I received an invitation from the mayor to apply for non-departmental funding, and it has come to my attention that we were in, the money we were invited to apply for took the time to complete and did so respectfully, is now being considered for zero dollars because we, quote, "don't provide direct service to the city." I ask you then, who does? No more than two short weeks ago, you all submitted and provided to us this very proclamation that states that Mariposa Center for Safety works to empower survivors of domestic violence, human trafficking, sexual assault, and family abuse through increasing self-sufficiency and self-worth, education, prevention, victim advocacy, and by offering emergency services, provisions, and shelter when needed. You asked the city then to join us as citizens in recognizing our agency and our services. I ask you then, did we stop in the two weeks that you issued us this proclamation, doing this critical work that you then recognized us for? In your council goals on your very website, you state you care about becoming advocates for the interests of this city and contributing to the community. You want to present Pueblo as a place where people prefer to live, improve our reputation, and provide, provide services that are responsive to our needs. I implore you then to consider how our agency helps you in that endeavor. If we were to no longer provide safe visitation, how would law enforcement be called to situations when a volatile exchange may occur? If we no longer provide visitation, how will we ensure that children have safety? If we no longer provide shelter, how will people flee their abusers? Where will they go and how will they get there? Does turning down our invitation to funding show that you advocate for any of us in the improvement you provide? We have twenty employees and we are a small downtown business like the ones you say you care about. If we have to lay off more people because we don't get to say we're not ready to lay off people yet because we already have, then where will that put us? Does that feel like responsive community partners to you? It sure doesn't to me. I understand how budgets work and I know there are obligations, but you all say that you have a display of transparency that was promised to us. You haven't been transparent whatsoever. I was not told by the city that we would be proposed amount of zero. I was sent this letter by a colleague in the community. How bold of you to hide it in a slideshow like we wouldn't notice. I understand why I was asking for CSAC funding. Seems like it would be double-dipping. I want you to know I served as a CSAC commissioner for six years. I probably know more about the process than any of you. I completely understand how it works because I do serve my city and am an active member of this community. It's not very transparent for you to in, not increase the CSAC budget and then tell us we will be receiving zero dollars after we've already applied for that funding and now have no opportunity because the deadline has passed to go back. I will end on this note. I've spoken to each of you about something related to our agency since I took this position just over a year ago. I have heeded all of your advice. I've held an open house. I worked to put our building up for sale. I've consolidated our buildings. I worked with agency partners to get a foothold on our needs. I reduced our budget from two point two million to one point two million. You asked me to bring more people. They're here. My board and employees are here with me. I don't know what more I can do to show you that we were in this and we will not go away. I will continue showing up. I will continue knocking on your door. I will show here every Monday until you tire of hearing me say, "Mariposa Center for Safety." I've watched for months while you sit on this dais and say you're not afraid of this community or the people who put you here. I'm not asking you to be afraid, but what I'm asking you for is to lay your head on your pillow tonight, thinking of the five fatalities in Pueblo just last year as a result of domestic violence. Think of the fifty-eight fatalities across the state and the fifty percent of those who are the children of the parents who were the collateral victims of these disputes. When you go to the Riverwalk or State Fair, which you have chosen to fund, remember how you took care of the people visiting Pueblo for one day when you could have provided funding to your neighbors and the taxpayers of this city, but you have chosen not to.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wish to speak on the budget?
Elvis Martinez, with the budget, and I was looking at it and everything, like the, the rest of the people looked at it. This might be a question that, I know it's not a question and answer, but to the mayor or any city council members, with the one million dollars that was put in from last year into this year's budget for your neighborhood, your, your idea, which was squashed, I wonder where that one, one million dollars is going? If it's going to separate departments, a hundred thousand here, two hundred thousand here, or just one million dollars to one department, how that would break down? That would be helpful to know that answer later tonight or at a later date. And then also, the, the mayor is proposing about a forty-five thousand dollar, uh, increase to her, to Mr. McCain. And I pulled a Cora report on it, like I do many Cora reports. And when Mr. McCain started, he, and this is all public, he was getting a hundred twenty thousand, two hundred sixty-four dollars. And, and now the increase just went up on ten one of twenty-four, per my Cora report, to a hundred thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and three dollars. So a forty-five thousand dollar increase that would put him at about a hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and three thousand, sixty cents. So I don't know why we could increase that when we're squashing Mariposa, Latino Chamber, and other minority groups. To me, that's just a disgrace and a shame and everything else that, words that I can't say here, I would be called out of order again, to groups that provide essential, hmm, what's the word I want to look for? Essential necessities to those that are underserved. And as stated, I think it was last week for the work session or the week prior that Mr. Flores and Mr. Nayle were talking about something about a flat rate to, uh, cut for the different uh, entities that we have. And I would partially agree with that. But I would say not just a complete ten percent cut for each department, maybe five percent here, ten percent to this one or twelve percent. So within the, the ballpark and everything. And then moving on, the, um, and, and Mr. Flores was also touching on this in the prior weeks when you guys were talking about it, is our zoo, which is getting a decrease of about twenty-one percent. I would like it probably less than ten percent decrease to there. And the Chamber of Commerce is getting a twenty-three percent of decrease. And the Chamber of Commerce has wonderful people working there, and they do more work than probably all of us combined with a wonderful group that Mr. Nava has over there. And I'm just wondering why we're still funding the State Fair at two hundred fifty thousand dollars. We could probably cut that maybe ten, fifteen percent. We could cut the Human Relations in fifteen percent. SRDA maybe five percent because the SRDA does great work right there. And Mr. Latino talks about this all the time, which is good, which is, we are the home of the heroes. And I one a thousand percent agree with you, Mr. Latino about that. But Mount Carmel Veteran Service Center, zero dollars in this proposed budget for next year? That's just giving the finger to our veterans. And we have two veterans on council. How, how could you guys vote for this when your fellow brothers and sisters right here are gonna get zero dollars? Probably even cut them maybe five percent, ten percent, but not a hundred percent. That's atrocity. And cutting the Pebble Food Project from forty thousand dollars to nothing? I, I don't know what type of math was going on, but this math doesn't add up in my head. And I'm, I'm not claiming to be a mathematician or an Einstein or anything, but elections have consequences. And we have elections here. It's just crazy. And my time is winding down and just want to wish you guys a happy Halloween. And I'm an angel for Halloween. Nice hat, Mr. Boston.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Come on down.
Good evening, Mayor Graham. Uh, public city council members and all city staff. It's a pleasure to be with you all tonight. And, uh, our art center, uh, backers here behind me, hopefully they'll come up right after me, um, when I'm done here. I'm Andy Sanchez. I serve as the CEO for Second to Crystal Arts and Conference Center. And on behalf of the Arts and Conference Center, we're requesting a revised plan to reduce our annual funding to a hundred and fifty thousand for twenty twenty-five based on the three hundred thousand that was previously allocated yearly. And instead of a zero amount towards the art center, as has been, uh, proposed. With this reduced funding, we will work to continue our essential community services. The art center established fifty-two years ago through the efforts of the City of Pueblo and Pueblo County. has been a cornerstone of arts, culture and education and an economic driver to local Pueblo restaurants and businesses. It has proven that the Arts Center brings in visitors from outside of Pueblo to spend at our local businesses. Our programs enrich the community and contribute to the local economy. Even through our ARPA funding from the city, we have proven that our programs tied to the city have met or exceeded expectations. Our national accreditation with the American Alliance of Museums, only 3% of national museums hold this distinction also reflects this consistency. This is important to note since whether or not an entity delivers a consistent record of comprehensive programs is crucial to assessment and accountability. Our consistency continually demonstrates our accountability to the city and illustrates through delivery that the Arts Center is thankful for support garnered from the city. This thanks was reflected as the Arts Center approached this dais recently in May as the proclamation that came before council recognized the Arts Center as the anchor for the vital income source that is based on our combined arts, sciences, culture, expertise that we assemble on our campus and shows that we have an impact to our city. As we look at our data from CSU Pueblo in our most recent study, that is over $4.5 million per year. The Arts Center has remained consistent in its programming and financial impact for over 52 years. We are currently geared to serve all our community in our programs and do so consistently, while our School of Dance alone brings in over 30,000 people into the downtown Pueblo corridor each year. Based on the most recent Economic Policy Institute multiplier, as a spinoff of the Arts Center's direct jobs, the Arts Center creates approximately an additional 100 plus jobs outside of the Arts Center, with the majority of those being in the city of Pueblo. Proportional jobs lost due to recommended budget cuts in 2025 would mean a net loss of approximately 13 jobs tied to the service industry in total within the city. The Arts Center already runs a lean shop of employees and this means that the Arts Center itself will be looking at cuts in Arts Center staffing as a result. Through our Museums for All programming and the District 60 Membership Program of about 900 family memberships as well as the more than 1,000 total visits by veterans each year with our Veterans Arts Programming, our programming and services are a vital part of the city, bolstering education in our school districts and our key sources of programming that government alone could not provide. Our accessibility and outreach to many Pueblo youth, including those who fit into our city's poverty rate statistics, are afforded through scholarships and current programming alternatives that provide anti-violence measures in the city. Our keeping our membership involved and engaged, especially on the fifth day of programming when kids are not at school, makes us proud that we offer such services. Our contributions and work continue to uphold a valued gem of Pueblo, which also includes the Buell Children's Museum's science, technology, engineering and math focus. Attendees tied to how the totality of the Arts Center's offerings drive tourism and revenue to local businesses equate to a spend of quote, $38 plus per person, per event, per visitor, as presented at the latest Colorado Creative Industry Summit held in Pueblo this year. This event brought over 300 professionals in the arts to visit and stay at the Pueblo Convention Center in partnership with the Arts Center and others. The $38 plus per person multiplier means that in a year, conservatively, the Arts Center brings in $1,538,400 in additional revenue to the city in this realm alone. The total estimated direct impact, when you add in our full-time employment payroll, goods and services purchased, visiting artists and attendees is well over the $4.5 million in positive impact to the city per year. With proposed funding cuts toward the Arts Center in the current proposed city budget, the approximate loss to the city equates to 450,000.
I'm sorry, but your time is up, but thank you so much.
President Aliff, I would just say, the Home of Heroes statues that sit outside of our Convention Center, those were created by David Durham, who is one of our stakeholders with the Arts Center. He learned those skills here in Pueblo. They inspire people to come to Pueblo. That is inherent what the Arts Center is about. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on the budget? Come on down.
Mayor Graham and Pueblo City Council Members. Thank you for allowing me to address you tonight. I am Wendy Rapp, current Arts Center Board Trustee, Board Treasurer, Capitol Campaign Chair and President of the Independent Endowment Board. These are volunteer and elected positions. In 1975, my husband and I, with two children under the age of three, chose to relocate to Pueblo to set up his career and raise a family. We did so because of the quality of life, cost of living and amenities Pueblo has for its community members. I believe Pueblo's nonprofits represent the soul of our community. As my career as a business manager in Pueblo, I was heavily involved in recruiting professionals to Pueblo. As we toured Pueblo, out-of-town prospects were always amazed at what Pueblo has to offer. An outstanding nationally accredited art center, an exceptional zoo, a magnificent symphony, a beautiful mountain park and trails, a veteran support group, a safety net for abused families, to name a few. Can you imagine a Pueblo without them? Now in retirement, I have made many friends who have retired to Pueblo. They have come for the same reasons and they are involved in the nonprofits and support them. However, I continually volunteer at least 500 hours a year to support multiple Pueblo nonprofits because I am well aware of the benefits our nonprofits bring to the citizens of Pueblo and tourists visiting Pueblo. I want Pueblo citizens today to have those benefits. I want future generations in Pueblo to benefit. I want to encourage tourism to Pueblo through our nonprofits. When my children come back to Pueblo, they recall many of the adventures they had through the Pueblo nonprofits while growing up here and they continue to visit them. Still on our bookcase are a cherished dinosaur and a spaceship they made on a school field trip to the Arts Center over 40 years ago. Please help us to make this possible for all children of Pueblo now and in the future. In addition, I would like to read a letter that you have been presenting tonight from the Jackson Foundation. Dated today, Mayor Heather Graham and Pueblo City Council Members. The Jackson Foundation would like you to reconsider your position in cutting all funding to the Sangre de Cristo Arts and Conference Center. As you well, as you may well be aware, this center was a monumental undertaking 52 years ago by members of this community who saw the benefit of bringing a center such as this to Pueblo. The foresight and persistent efforts of Kathy Farley, Pat Kelly, Bob Rawlings, Bob Jackson, Malin Thatcher White and other past civic leaders of Pueblo allowed this center to flourish. This center has attracted individuals from all over the Colorado region as well as those in the national and international communities. It is Pueblo's gem. It spurs economic growth and is one of Pueblo's main draws. I fear that sacrificing this one area of the community for the benefit of another will not have the intended effect desired and in fact, will have the exact opposite. This center of creativity engages the minds, hearts and hands of Pueblo citizens for the better. We need all areas supported in making this a community we can be proud of. Do not consider its economic impact as well as social impact on the entire city and county in cutting funding is a short-sighted decision fraught with many errors. A cut in funding from the council will leave the center vulnerable to decline and result in the loss of many programs it supports for both our adult and youth communities. The burden of support for the center should not come entirely from generous individuals and local foundations. They do their fair share and in turn, the council needs to consider its share. Sincerely yours, David M. Jackson, President, the Jackson Foundation. And thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to give testimony?
Hello. My name is Karen V. Hill. I'm a Development Director for the San Francisco Arts and Conference Center. We've brought a thumb drive this evening with a short video that we'd like to share with you, please. What you see is a slide that talks about our funding request for 2025, $150,000. We requested, received $300,000 last year. I want to tell you a little bit more about the Arts Center. It's a multi-faceted campus offering Pueblo citizens support in the arts and sciences. Our campus includes the Buell Children's Museum with the science, tech, art, engineering and math focus bolstering the four-day school week as well as inclusiveness for those with ADA concerns and are veterans. The Arts Center is in step with local needs. Our campus improves education and options for children and adults. Our next frame features a video with retired Victor Reyes, a retired district court judge and his grandson Forrest.
Tourism or anything else?
Cities support the Arts Center is crucial because for the people in the community to build and believe in the Arts Center, the least the leadership can do is believe in the Arts Center. And by funding it, it brings tourists within our city. The priority is come to the parking lot and see the amount of buses that are from outside of Pueblo County who bus their children here. People from Denver kill up here because they don't offer something like this to the children. So it is absolutely fundamentally crucial for this community that City Council assume a leadership role and fund the Arts.
Tourism or anything else?
Our next frame is a couple of visitors who told myself and our CEO that they chose Pueblo for five days to visit because of the Arts Center and our, and our collection of southwestern art.
I'm Jerry Noble from Albuquerque.
And I'm Linda Sky also.
Well, thank you, Linda and Jerry. Tell me, you were mentioned that you had seen some information about Pueblo being an arts hub and that brought you into town?
Yes, yeah. We visit around small towns in around Albuquerque. We've been doing that for 25 years now since we moved there and just enjoying all the small towns. I haven't come quite this far north before. We have been to Pocahontas Springs, we've been to Trinidad and saw online that Pueblo is just treating this incredible arts kind of corridors, as it is called. And it's a hub here that we wanted to pull up. That's what we really enjoyed doing.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, we like doing local things and this is very local and very impressive.
And let me ask this, how many days will you be staying?
We'll be here five days.
I'm Jerry Noble from Albuquerque.
Our next slide is a group of students from St. Teresa's School. They visited the Arts Center for an Arts Center enrichment performance from Creed Repertory Theater in Gallagher Tours. There were just a few of many hundreds of students who were there. And our next slide features a story about the Arts Center and our partnering with our veterans outreach programming, which saw over 1,000 attendees in last year. That was the first year the program started and it's growing. The Arts Center, it talks about the Arts Center campus is an attraction for our visitors from the route region, the state, the country and beyond. Our School of Dance brings in over 40,000 attendees each year, each year alone to our campus. Your campus brings a variety of performances for all segments of our community and improves our quality of life with these immense benefits. And I, let's try and see if we can play that video.
I'm Piper Vaughn here in Pueblo where every Saturday veterans, active duty military members and their families gather at the Sangre de Cristo Art Center for free art class. These classes provide community for veterans and a creative outlet to work through PTSD. Every weekend, veterans in the Pueblo area gather to do crafts together. Janine Floyd is a Navy veteran and has been a part of the art expression group for more than a year. She tells me she looks forward to these classes every week.
For people who've either retired or been in the military before, your days are pretty structured. And then this helps you say, okay, it's Saturday, I get to go do this. And so that helps your mental health to, makes you willing to wake up and be happy about doing something that day.
John Knowlton is also a Navy veteran. He says these classes help him too.
Oh yeah, it's helped my mental health. I don't know how to describe it. It just, or you know, you're gonna enjoy it when you get here.
Sal Katz is the Rural Director of Mount Carmel Veteran Service Center and a veteran himself. He tells me the importance of this program.
It's just a unique opportunity for veterans to get out of their homes and to just spend time with other veterans to kind of express themselves for a good week, bad week and just kind of fellowship and have the opportunity to just talk to each other.
For veterans struggling, Sal shares how important it is for veterans to find community.
Having it out of getting out of their home and coming here and just sharing is extremely important.
Their group is eager for their arts class to continue to grow and hope more military members continue to join. No registration is needed for the weekly class. For more information, head to koaa.com. In Pueblo, I'm Piper Vaughn, News 5.
Thank you.
On the next slide.
I'm sorry, but your time's up.
Okay.
So, but thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you.
Is there anyone else? I'm sorry, I had this lady up here that has been trying to get up for five minutes. Are you, do you want to talk? Okay, you're up.
Yes, I wasn't planning to speak about the budget in particular, but since we're trying to save the bathhouse, saving the bathhouse, giving it to the group that wants to help it and refurbish it and make it into a beautiful building that would help Pueblo bring money in.
Could I get your, could I get your name for the record?
Oh, sorry. Eleanor Bartley.
Thank you.
Hi.
Thanks.
So it would save you money. And also today while speaking with Chief of Staff, the thought came up, he mentioned unless they want to buy it, unless somebody wants to buy it. Well, it's, I think it's a good idea. Maybe you can sell the bathhouse to people that love it, have it standing there and then put the money towards your budget. If you don't want to save it yourself, let somebody save it, please. Please think about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Everhart and I am on the Board of Directors for Mariposa Center for Safety. And I have not prepared anything today, but I did want to just implore you to consider the active harm that will be done to reduce an agency of our caliber, of the impact of the magnitude of our impact, just how much of a detriment removing completely 100% of any funding for 2025, what kind of impact that will have on the people in your community, District 3, District 1, District 4, District 2. All of these individuals that make up your constituency are individuals that may, and in many cases likely have experienced some level of domestic violence in their lives. What we know is domestic violence does not discriminate. It does not care your race, your religion, your background. It affects all of us. And it is not just the direct victims, but it's their children. It's their family members. To not have a shelter for women and children and men who are victims of violence to escape, to escape, not just leave, not just make plans to change their lifestyle, to escape for their lives, to flee. To have such a negative impact on an agency like that is deplorable. And I really encourage you that as you consider the finalization of this budget, that you take into consideration every single individual who is affected by domestic violence and what kind of reduction in service and what kind of reduction in support will come from this level of decision. Thank you for your time and your consideration. Thank you for your time and your consideration and I hope so much that you reconsider the zero dollar balance to direct towards Mariposa Center for Safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on the budget? Come on now.
Hello. My name is Amber Dawn. I own Kirby Red Girl Creations here in town. It is a small studio and art center and I co-own, well, sort of co-own, Heavy Mean 16 Counseling. We are located in the Pueblo Art Alliance. I'm only here on behalf of us, not on behalf of the Art Alliance, just getting that straight out there. We have, I am a survivor of domestic violence, a survivor of human trafficking and a former person that lived with an addiction. It was at an art class for cancer survivors where I learned my voice mattered. It was an art class at the Sanger de Cristo for people with PTSD that I learned I could start a small business and actually be something of value to other people. And it was at the Pueblo Art Alliance I sold my first piece. My first, it was an indigenous woman and I had roses. It was a beautiful, beautiful piece. And it started me on a track to understand that not only could I help heal that little girl through art, I could provide a space for other people to help heal that little girl through art. Their little girls, their little boys, their little non-binaries. I could be there for them. My partner has spent years and years and years becoming a counselor and getting us to a, we live in a home that definitely needs some help, but we live in that home so we can pay rent on a studio so we can build a counseling and art center for the community. And although I am disabled, it's taken me considerably longer to get it really going. I haven't asked for any help. We've been doing it for ourselves, but my concern is if, well, now that I've been made aware by so many other people of the vast influence that I only had a little bit aware of how much the arts, how much is being funded through this. I'm just like, wow, just, just realizing how miniscule my drop in the bucket is, but how important it is. Because while my partner is supplying low income and sliding fee counseling services to our at-risk youth and our veterans, he's referring to them to these free art programs and utilizing these programs in the community that will be cut. And if our budget at the studio, again, I haven't spoken to the board. I don't know what cuts they'll make if this budget goes through. But if my rent goes up, I can no longer supply a place for people to come and rehearse for free. A place for people to come and build projects and make bracelets and get community services and have free picking circles. Right now, I've only been able to supply rehearsal space for a couple of small burlesque and art troops here in town. Because I, again, I am disabled and I can only do so much. I'm doing better. I'm getting better. But um, I invest in the arts. I invest in the youth and people that invested us. I don't drink. I have hundreds of food allergies, so I hardly eat out. But I bought art at Sanger de Cristo. I've bought art at the Blowback. I've bought art at the Pueblo Arts Alliance. I've bought art at IdeaCon. I spend my money and pay taxes on art with this community and I know there is a higher correlation to children and people succeeding in life when we invest in art over community policing. And I really, really hope that the Mariposa, did I say that correctly? Mariposa Center continues to get its funding. As a survivor of domestic violence and as a human trafficking survivor, thank you for what you do. And I hope that the Pueblo Food Project continues to get its funding because I was born into homelessness. And I know how important it is to have someone say, hey, let me show you how to grow those beans. And the Sanger de Cristo, when I sat there at the Picasso's for the free night at the Picasso and I saw them and they're shatteredness. And I thought about my Lithopedian pregnancy and how I never got abortion services and it rotted inside me and how shattered I was. I wanted to paint and make beautiful things and give other people a place. So when the weeds get too tall outside the Art Alliance, I pick them. I don't ask for any help. I pick them. When the trash gets out there, I pick it. At the Chili Fest, when people left their turkey legs, I pick them because I care about the Art Alliance and I care about all of us having a place to heal and create. And Pueblo has been my healing place through art.
Thank you.
Continue to invest in art.
We appreciate you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on the budget?
Hello. Hello, Council. How are you tonight? My name's Chayla. 8.5 million to the Pueblo Police Department. 8.5 million cuts off of nonprofit that provides straight up happiness to our own community. My six-year-old daughter and her grandfather are frequent visitors of both the art museum and the zoo. They probably know them both by name. A cut on nonprofits that provide important resources for our community, Pueblo, not Colorado Springs, not Denver, not Aurora. Nonprofits that provide food where otherwise food deserts are a reality in our city. Nonprofits that provide resources to our marginalized communities that directly contribute to our communities of color and those of slower socioeconomic status. And an $8.5 million increase to an inaccurate and harmful narrative that crime is increasing and that being tough on crime is gonna fix it. Are the cops going to fix and provide successful mental health assessments? Are they going to provide meals, clothing and essential basic need, um, needs? Therapy? Are they going to provide services for our veterans? Are cops going to provide care? I'm sorry, for our domestic and sexual assault victims? Are cops going to help our youth find a sense of belonging and inspiration? Are cops going to tell the story of our beautiful, albeit rough around the edges culture that is or should be told of Pueblo? They have not yet. And I assure you continuing to take resources away won't either. Those problems cannot and will not ever be fixed with greater threats of violence. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on the budget?
Good evening. My name is Brett Verna. I want to thank the city of Pueblo for doing the cleanup day this Saturday. That was very successful, by the way. That was really good. I want to say that very much. Friday, I got the opportunity to tour the project, 16 different areas that the urban renewal is doing with their programs with the TIF funds. It was very, very interesting and I totally recommend you guys to take the next one. It was their second one. Mayor Gradishar was there. Chief of Staff was there. It was really an eye awakening and what they're doing with the urban renewal and the funds. It was very, very eye awakening. I totally recommend that being done. I'm in here in reference to Visit Pueblo. You were taking a quarter of a million dollars away from our budget. Visit Pueblo was generated by a fund that was created in 1984 by our city, which was called a lodging tax. We raised just south of $1.8 million in lodging tax in Pueblo. Last year you gave us about $900,000 to market Pueblo. Uh, this, you're cutting a quarter of a million dollars off. Hence, what Mr. Aliff was saying earlier with the USA boxing. This week, they're bringing about $500,000 into this town. Just to say, if they, if we cut that off, you guys are going to face somewhere up to around $10 million worth of income. We are a revenue generator, unlike a lot of the other stuff. So we have generated our funds, then, then we turn around and take those funds through Visit Pueblo and Market Pueblo. To take that money away, I have to ask the big question, how are we going to replace that loss? So we're, we're bringing the money in. You guys are making 1.8 million. We're getting, we were getting 900,000 to market the town. That's $900,000 back to the city of Pueblo and they're using it for their general friend. The intent of that wasn't for that. But to share that, I understand that for the art center, which made a big impact and I was really appreciative of watching those things. To give you an idea, Grand Junction gets, gives their, the city gives their Visit Grand Junction $5 million. The city of Alamosa gives their Visit Alamosa $1.6 million to bring awareness that they're down there. Trinidad gives their Visit Trinidad $1 million. We generate our money and all we're asking is if you're going to take that away, I'm going to ask and I'm really applaud the mayor's office for trimming the budget and doing what she has to do, understanding our shortfall. That's a challenging point, very challenging. But if you're going to take that away and we lose that $10 million prospectively, what are we going to replace that with? It's all I want you to really look at. It's an economic generator. It's not funding things. We've got staff. They go out to the trade shows. They market our town outside of Pueblo for Pueblo and that's what's making the impact. And all I'm saying is, uh, really take a look at that. Then I noticed you brought back up one of the little side thorns that I was talking about in reference to the city park and saving the tennis court building. We have offered to do that for free, a group of business people here. Take it, let the city use it. When we're done, we'll do a lease with them, take and do the leasehold improvement, totally update it and then gift it back to the city. It will save them the money on the demo. I've asked them just to take and make an addendum to the bid documents to separate the demolition from the construction so we can make a business decision. Maybe it won't work, but if we can still look at that after the bid dates are there, I would really appreciate it. And so were a lot of the old families that have done a lot of funding for Pueblo and I'd like to be aware of that. But anyway, thank you guys for that. I just wanted to make aware and visit Pueblo and thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on the budget? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Madam Clerk, we move to the consent agenda. Item M, Resolutions.
Item M1, a resolution ratifying an award of an emergency construction contract, the amount of $143,275 to Miller Pipeline LLC and Indiana Limited Liability Company, authorized to do business in the state of Colorado for project number 23-040 SWAN03 for emergency storm sewer point repair on 14th and Court and approving a change order in the amount of $23,415 for additional working materials and authorizing and approving the purchasing agent's execution of same. Item M2, a resolution awarding construction contract, the amount of $39,156.06, San Andreas Construction, Inc., for project number 24-094 Mitchell Park Shelter Installation, setting for $7,831.21 for contingencies and authorizing the purchasing agent to execute same. Item M3, a resolution ratifying the award of an emergency construction contract, the amount of $22,487 to Rescueating and Excavating LLC, the Colorado Limited Liability Company, for project number 23-040 SWAN03 for emergency storm sewer point repair at the intersection of Evans Avenue and Washington Street and approving a change order in the amount of $75,978.91 for additional working materials and authorizing and approving the purchasing agent's execution of same. Item M4, a resolution adopting the 2024 Pueblo County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Item M5, a resolution tabling final action, the petition for annexation of an area commonly known as the Pueblo Recreation Resort Number One, annexation for an additional period of not more than 180 days. Item M6, a resolution tabling final action, the petition for annexation of the area commonly known as the Pueblo Recreation Resort Number Two, annexation for an additional period of not more than 180 days. Item M7, a resolution confirming the appointment by the mayor of Anna Jones and Joe Trina to complete a four-year term expiring August 30th, 2027 on the ADA Advisory Committee and ordinances first presentation. Item N1, an ordinance adding section 304 of chapter one of Title 11 to the Pueblo Municipal Code, adding the offensive interference with a city employee. Item N2, an ordinance amending sections 403 and 402 and 403 of chapter one of Title 11 of Pueblo Municipal Code, amending the class of offense for damaging, defacing or destruction of property and amending the class level for said offenses. Item N3, an ordinance amending zoning restrictions to rezone 2.39 acres from I-3 Heavy Industrial Zone District, S-1 Governmental Use Zone District and S-3 Flood Plane District Zone District to I-3 Heavy Industrial Zone District and the rezone 2.72 acres from S-1 Governmental Use Zone District to I-2 Industrial Zone District.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there an approval?
President Aliff, I move to approve all resolutions set forth in the consent agenda, pass the ordinances of the consent agenda, setting the public hearings for November 11th, 2024, and order the ordinances to be published by title.
Say your second. Counselor Gomez, any questions? Let's call for the vote. Pass a 7-0. Madam Clerk, we now move to the regular agenda. There are no resolutions. We move to our ordinances' final presentation.
Item R1, an ordinance amending Pueblo Municipal Code on Marijuana, revising 11-10-103, 11-10-201 through 11-10-204, 11-10-505, 11-11-3103, 11-11-201 through 11-11-204 and 11-11-505, introduced October 15th, 2024 by Counselor Roger Gomez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have a staff report?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I'm happy to provide the staff report for this item. Um, so this item and item R2 are the hearing officer ordinances that were presented at a work session previously. It would change the liquor board and the marijuana board over from being a community board of five members to a single hearing officer, which would be Judge, our Judge Dunford. Some of, we have about, um, we looked at the top 10 municipalities and nine, well, at Pueblo is one of the top 10 municipalities within the state of Colorado and we looked at the top 12. And of the other 11, nine are hearing officer and two are board. So we are, we did take a pretty firm look at the opportunities in switching to the hearing officer. Some of the advantages included an increased knowledge of liquor licensing and marijuana laws, as well as knowledge of legal processes and procedure, a minimized risk of appeal due to this increase. Um, and we understand that serving on the boards is voluntary and not really the board members' full-time jobs. Um, but this would be part of the job for a municipal hearing officer who would have attended law school, who would have passed the bar to prove their understanding of legal matters. Um, cost savings was another advantage in this situation in analyzing the city of Publix process. We found that there would be a cost savings, um, because currently the board members do cost the city significant resources. Uh, an assistant city attorney, a deputy city clerk, a liquor licensing coordinator. Uh, the security and facility staff are all compensated to stay past working hours for the meetings, which take place three times a month at City Hall. Um, and each of the five members of the Liquor License Authority are also currently compensated per meeting. There's also time obligations for the city clerk and mayor's office and interviewing and selecting new board members each year, adversiting to fill the open positions, training the new board members. And having a single hearing officer would save the city all of these resources by reducing the time needed for training appointments, um, overtime and meeting time. The clerks who have switched to a hearing officer have also found that they, that their businesses find it to be a more business friendly, um, opportunity. It results in an overall simplification of the process and an efficiency in reviewing the applications. It also allows for more flexibility in the hearing schedule and tends to be at a better time, especially for liquor licensees who would rather have the morning rather than an evening due to their business hours. Um, and then meetings would never need to be canceled for a lack of a quorum. So we would always be able to conduct business in a timely manner and get these applications approved and on to the state for final approval. Uh, by transitioning to a authority with, as a hearing officer, the city would be able to provide a more expeditious, efficient, fair, consistent and business-friendly process for businesses wishing to obtain a city Pueblo liquor or marijuana license and for addressing violations of the liquor and marijuana code. While the city would lose some citizen participation in the current license authority, it would also minimize the risks associated with the lack of specialization of such boards and the risk of improper agendas or biases. Uh, additionally, because these authorities are quasi judicial with narrow discretion, having a hearing officer would minimize the city's risk of appeal to the district court due to insufficient record or improper legal analysis. Uh, that includes, that concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions from council. Uh that includes that concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions from council.
Thank you for that report. Want to remind everybody that this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Boston, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Counselor Latino, any comments? Counselor Flores?
Uh you indicated that uh the previous board uh was a quasi-judicial. Does that change that now that there's uh uh it it's no longer a quasi-judicial uh situation, is it?
No, it is still it is it is still quasi judicial judicial as as the as a single uh entity authority. The authority itself is still making quasi-judicial decisions.
How many members uh to each one of these were there?
There are five members to each board, so it's uh there are ten positions in total. Uh there is one member that serves on both boards, so it it's nine people.
Would these boards be considered uh uh analogous to a jury uh when they when they hear a hearing and but it just seems to me there's some benefit uh for five people making a decision, having different perspectives, different points of view.
I mean, the issue with it being quasi-judicial is that there is not actually that much availability of opinion into it. You have to make decisions a certain way based on the legal the legalities of the law.
So when there's a hearing, there's an attorney in there uh from our office, I would assume, that's guiding them as to the interpretation of what violation they were hit with.
Yes. And the and they're also able to then have uh their own attorney present as well.
And so now we're going to have one person that's going to make that decision instead of.
Yes, the judge.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I mean, as I said before, when we talked about this the first time, I I just I don't want to take away the community uh involvement. And so you know, that's just how I feel about it. If there's no other questions or comments, uh Counselor Maestri?
You know, when legal interpretation is involved, um it's best to it be served by someone who understands the law. You know, we look at um all of this legal interpretation coming forth by citizens that's not panning out. Um even even though you have legal uh lawyer present, that doesn't always um I'd like to see it be handled by someone who fully understands the law. I if we if we say that, if if we say that that's not acceptable, then we're going to say the courtroom's not the judge doesn't have a place in the courtroom to be non-bi unbiased and make, you know, the right decisions. And then the next thing you know, we've got community boards sitting next to the judge trying to make decisions. So I I just would like to see it be handled.
And and I would say that there is still opportunity for public participation. I mean, it's the the same setup in terms of the public is still able to come and give public testimony um at at the at the public hearing, should there be a public hearing. Um but the majority of the time, we we do not have any public participation.
Thank you.
Well, I wonder what the I wonder what the argument would be if they wanted to get rid of city council and just have a hearing officer. And would you would would we think that was the best thing? Because none of us are lawyers. None of us know much about about law or legality, but we have an attorney here, an assistant city attorney, who's at our our beck and call whenever we need to to get a question answered. These things work the best when the community is involved and they're and and that there's there's members on these boards who have a vested interest in the community and they make decisions, just like the city council make decisions. Not always the best decisions, but it's always a a decision based upon what the citizens supposedly have told us they want it. So that's just my take on it. Any other questions? Counselor Flores?
I would like to hear our uh city attorney uh indicate, you know, what your opinion is, because there's other cities that are doing this now, right? And so could you uh uh enlighten us, I guess, uh about what a great deal this is going to be?
So as as far as the legality of of doing this, you're fully within your rights legally to have a hearings officer versus a board. I think it really comes down to a policy decision as to whether or not you want it done as a citizen board versus a hearings officer. Um that hearings officer could be the municipal court judge. It could be somebody else that is appointed, doesn't have to be the municipal court judge. Um but uh it I mean, there's there's really not a legal issue. We do have um people from the law department that go to the meetings and um represent both um from a uh the board perspective that give them information about the law and advise the board. We also have someone that prosecutes any violation and they prosecute those in front of the board. So it it's really a policy decision from city council as to what you want to do.
And in most cases, uh the uh the violator, I guess, in this case, uh he also or he she or she, they have a an attorney with them.
Sometimes, not always. They they have the right to hire an attorney if they choose to, but they don't always have an attorney. Um a lot of times the the violations are worked out ahead of time, and so they reach in a an agreement with the city and those agreements then are carried out. Um you know, those are are things that uh a hearings officer could do too. It would still be a quasi-judicial function. Um so this would not be would be handled a little bit differently than a courtroom because it would be a quasi-judicial function.
But if 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 a a violator, again, I don't know, that's probably not the right word. They now are going to, now the the deck in a way is stacked against them because now you have a legal person that's not going to take that that's going to be if they don't bring their own attorney, now you've got that liquor store or marijuana store now completely out uh I don't know, that it just seems like it's an imbalance there uh that that he can't have the five individuals that are just common citizens kind of look at his case in a much different way than a judge that's just going to look at the law black and white.
So what I can tell you from my personal experience on on being on both sides, this when I was in a lot apartment before, I uh did a lot of liquor board work. Um so I can tell you that the members of the board bring a lot of personal hands-on experience within the industry um to the cases. So they tend, like you say, look at things a little bit more practical than they do legally speaking. They rely on the lawyer that's representing the board and providing advice to the board to provide the that legal aspect of it. So it's still there, but it's tempered a little bit by the practical experience of the people on the board. Um with that said, um and to the the clerk's point, it does take uh a significant amount of resources to have those boards and prepare those boards. Um and from apparently from the clerk's office, they pay overtime for their clerks to be there to attend those boards. Those boards are typically in the evenings. Um so so it's, you know, again, it's a policy decision. Um I don't think that one way is necessarily better than the other. They just they each have their own pros and cons.
And can I also can I also say, Counselor Flores? With the president's permission.
Sure.
Um one of the other things that we've noticed is that at least as far as my time um working with the liquor board is they have pretty much always gone with the re the recommendation of the city attorney. And I do think that a sitting judge would potentially have more leeway in that it might have more of an opinion rather than depending so heavily on the legal opinion of the city.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Let's call for the vote. Yeah, it's closed. Passes five two. Madam Clerk, R two.
Item R two, an ordinance approving, accepting, and budgeting, excuse me, item R two, an ordinance amending the Pueblo Municipal Code on Alcohol Beverages, revising eleven dash three dash one through eleven dash three dash thirteen, eleven dash three dash fifteen, eleven dash three dash twenty-six, eleven dash three dash forty-one, eleven dash three dash forty-three through eleven dash three dash forty-six, eleven dash three dash fifty through eleven dash three dash fifty-two, eleven dash three dash sixty-one through eleven dash three dash sixty-three, eleven dash three dash seventy-two, and eleven dash three dash seventy-four through eleven dash three dash seventy-eight. Introduced October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four by Counselor Roger Gomez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have a staff report?
Uh yes, I'm happy to provide the staff report. Um this item would specifically be for the liquor authority for the same item just discussed. Um we did previously just do the marijuana authority. Um that does conclude my staff report, but I am happy to continue to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Maestri is second by Counselor Gomez. Is it any questions? Let's call for the vote. Pass a six one. We now move to item R three, Madam Clerk.
Item R three, an ordinance approving, accepting, and budgeting a multimodal transportation and mitigation option funds grant award and applicable conditions pertaining thereto between the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation, the Pueblo Area Council of Governments, and the Colorado Department of Transportation, establishing project number PT twenty-three oh three, budgeting and appropriating sixty-five thousand dollars and authorizing the mayor to execute same. Introduced October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four by Counselor Roger Gomez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, sir, you do. Good evening, Mr. President, councilors, Madam Mayor. This is a multimodal grant fund through C dot administered through Payco to cover kids ride free program for current year. You'll see in a couple of weeks, there'll be another ordinance coming forward to cover kids ride free program for the following year. And that one is federally funded because it was sorry, it's state funded because it's coming through the Department of Energy. And that concludes my staff report.
Thank you for that report. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Boston, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Martinez, any questions? Counselor Martinez?
Hey, Ben. The students being able to ride free for transit has been a thing for a couple of years now. Um do you have any data to show how how much ridership has increased by since making it free?
So I can give it to you in pennies, ma'am. Let's break it down that way if you would. So a kid's age ride is a dollar. Flat fare for a student fee is a dollar. So in the first year of existence, the program was thirty-five thousand dollars, which is thirty-five thousand rides. Then you go to the third year of the program and it was fifty thousand rides because it was fifty thousand dollars in grant funding that we spent to execute the program. This year alone, from January through October, is sixty-five thousand rides. So this grant will cover that and the new right, the new one that's coming on board that's administered through the Department of Energy at the state is there's no set dollar amount tied to it, but it'll cover October to October. So currently, my team and the city's grant writer, we're hot on the trail to try and find someone to cover the year following. So we can keep it going because the numbers are going up and they need the ride. There's not a there's not a reliable bus service for school-aged children. There's not a reliable bus service for the schools that provide to their students to get back and forth to school any longer. So if you want to see how successful it is, come take a ride with me and my guys at seven o'clock in the morning and see how many students were moving across this town. Because it's every day.
Yes, and not only that, but you know, if we're encouraging young people to access pro-social locations like our parks and Boys and Girls Club and you know, all these great after-school programs and their parents aren't working, they're they can't access that except by use of transit. So it sounds like youth ridership has doubled since making it free.
Hundred percent.
And I'm hopeful that it'll continue to rise even more. So thanks for thanks for giving our teens and our young people a safe way to to access um some cool places in Pueblo.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Let's call for the vote. Pass a seven zero. Mr. Clerk, item R four. R four, an ordinance amending section fourteen dash four dash seven six of the Pueblo Municipal Code relating to sales tax exemption exemption with respect to occasional sales by state qualifying charitable organizations, increasing the annual qualifying amount for occasional sales to make consistent with the state statutes introduced October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four by Counselor Roger Gomez. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, you do. Hi, counsel, Mr. President. Madam Mayor, the ordinance before you increases the exempt sale threshold for qualified charitable organizations. Excuse me, the occasional sales threshold uh to match the state. Um we set our threshold in twenty seventeen to twenty-five thousand dollars. The state has since increased their exempt sales amount to forty-five thousand dollars. This ordinance matches the state's threshold in perpetuity. So if the state increases that threshold in the future, our ordinance follows that threshold. Uh and that concludes my staff report.
Mr. Jagger, do you want to add to that?
No, but I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve? Counselor Gomez, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Flores. Any questions? Let's call for the vote. Pass a seven zero. Mr. Clerk, item R five. R five, an ordinance amending section fourteen dash four dash seven six of the Pueblo Municipal Code relating to essential and non-essential articles furnished in connection with the sale of taxable food and making same consent with the laws of the state of Colorado, introduced October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four by Counselor Roger Gomez. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Do we have a staff report?
Hi, counsel. The ordinance before you modernizes our sales tax exemptions as well. So in March of two thousand and ten, the state defined non-essential articles sold in conjunction with taxable food. Uh this ordinance before you defines that and exempts those items that are essential to transfer food items and considers taxable those items which are non-essential. Um and example would be if you're going through the takeout window, the wrapper that your hamburger is wrapped in or the carton that your french fries are contained in are essential to transfer that food to the customer. They're considered part of the price of that food item and they're taxed with the sale. Non-essential items that would be in that same bag would be plastic utensils, the napkins, which have not been taxed. So this amendment uh to the uh code defines those items as taxable. And that concludes my staff report.
Thank you for that report. Want to remind everybody, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve? Counselor Gomez, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Flores, questions? Counselor Martinez?
When will this go into effect?
January first, twenty twenty-five.
Okay. And is there a provision for the end or is it indefinitely?
Indefinitely.
So how much will this raise the prices of our food if we're going to uh now start taxing the non-essentials? Has anybody got any idea that uh does that start costing the consumer more money? Has anybody got any idea that uh, does that start costing the consumer more money? Because now the restaurants or whoever, wherever it is, it's not just restaurants, right?
Correct.
Uh, so on these non-essential items, what's, is there a cost?
So that dollar value would be unknown. Um, these items have been exempt from tax. Um, throughout the history of of our code. Um, so what we are doing is modernizing our exemptions to match those of the state.
Sounds like it's going to cost us more money all around the, uh, Counselor Gomez?
This is getting pretty creative, isn't it? I mean, I'd like to ask the mayor who owns the restaurant. I used to own a restaurant. It's like to get your opinion on this one.
I think at this point, the city is doing what it can to increase tax coming into the city. This is, we've looked at what the state taxes and we're trying to mirror um, additional items that the state is already taxing um, and bringing our tax code up to those same amounts.
Is this being tried in other cities as well?
I would assume that this is everywhere else. Um, but Pueblo, there's several of these initiatives that the city um, does not tax on, has not taxed on, and that has just fallen through the cracks um, over the last several years. And so this is one way that we've been trying to look at increasing revenue and what the state has done to tax and if the state taxes it, it doesn't have to go to a vote of the people because it's already been passed at that amount.
Are you guys aware of that being done anyplace else or it's just being created here?
No, it's, uh, we looked at Denver. Denver has the same definition. I think most cities do. So if you look at from the retailers, it's probably easier to be able to just tax because they gotta keep track of what the tax uh, the state does and also then what the city does. And for the type of items, they're probably talking about a difference and I don't think it's going to be a significant amount of money, but it'd probably be easier for the retailer. But I can't speak for them exactly.
Thank you.
Counselor, Counselor Maestri?
Well, this is like the ten cent bag fee. It it's, it's the same, same thing. It's generating money and we're still, I mean, everybody hates that fee. Um, I'll still carry out twenty five articles before I buy a bag. Um, and so it's funny, you know, I mean, we just, we just um, made someone else exempt from having to pay taxes before us, but they were charitable organizations. And then we come down here to the people and we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna tax the people some more. Um, and so I I mean, that's just what it is. Cut. And I, you know, I won't be voting for it. I didn't vote for the, the, the bag fee either. So this will just be another thing I'm not voting for.
Any questions? Counselor Boston?
In reference to your statement, I just know uh, when the plastic bag thing happened and then the styrofoam ban happened, uh, you started seeing restaurants implement a to-go fee. It was a dollar or two per to-go just to help cover those costs. If you happened to buy the, you know, cardboard instead of the styrofoam or, you know, having to pay taxes on certain things. So those are some of the costs that you'd probably see. Probably be somewhere around a dollar or two per to-go kinda is what you'd probably end up expecting.
Any other comments? Let's call for the vote. Uh, it fails five two. We now move to R six, Mister Clerk. R six, an ordinance uh, electing to certify abatement assessment rule number twenty twenty four dash one to county treasurer and to have the county treasurer collect in the same manner as other taxes introduced October fifteenth, twenty twenty four by Counselor Roger Gomez. Thank you, Mister Clerk. We have a staff report?
Sure. Good evening, members of council and President Aliff. What you have before you tonight is an ordinance that takes all of the city's abatement liens that have not been paid for twenty twenty three, and that would consist of weed, litter and board up abatements. And it certifies those unpaid debts to the county treasurer to be included on next spring's tax bill. This is a consistent program that the city implemented in twenty fifteen and we've done this yearly ever since. I thought it would be helpful to give counsel an idea of the success of the program. So since twenty fifteen, when we started doing this program, we have collected one, just over one point one million dollars as the gross collections with a net collection to the city of just over one million dollars. So it's been a very successful program. It's a very efficient way to collect that debt. That concludes my staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report. Thank you for that report. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
I moved to approve.
Counselor Flores, and do we have a second?
Second. Give it to Joe.
Counselor Latino. Any questions? Let's call for the vote. It passes seven zero. Madam, Mister Clerk, item R seven? R seven, an ordinance approving agreement, amending employment agreement dated October ninth, twenty twenty eight eighteen between Key Structures LLC, a Colorado, Colorado Limited Liability Company and the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation, accepting irrevocable letter of credit from the First Bank on behalf of Key Structures LLC in the amount of one million, two hundred twenty five thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars, seventy one cents and approving a sub uh, subordination agreement by and between Key Structures LLC, a Colorado Limited Liability Company, Adoba Pueblo LLC, a Colorado Limited Liability Company, the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation and the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority, CHFA, introduced October fifteenth, twenty twenty four by Counselor Roger Gomez. Thank you, Mister Clerk. We have a staff report?
This is an ordinance, as it says, approving an agreement amending.
Can you turn your mic on, please?
So uh, Key Structures is a company that builds modular homes. They have the property out by the airport. Um, they've been out there since two thousand and eighteen when the city entered into an employment agreement with them. Um, since then, they are looking to sell all of their assets and their business to another company, Adoba Pueblo, who will be doing the same thing. Um, Adoba Pueblo went and got a loan from Chaffa um, to finance the purchase and the purchase of the property. Chaffa is requiring a subordination agreement in order to um, facilitate the loan, which would mean that our deed of trust would be junior to theirs. So we've had this situation come up a couple of other times with our employment agreements and what happens when we subordinate, we lose our priority, our security interest in the property. So if they default, we can no longer go against the property as a priority lender. So by substituting with the letter of credit, it's actually easier for the city to collect should there be an issue because all we have to do is go to the bank that has issued the letter of credit, say they're in default and collect the money they're in default. So we wouldn't have to foreclose on the property. Um, we still retain our deed of trust, so we're still gonna have the deed of trust and the letter of credit at this point. Um, but the deed of trust would be junior to the Chaffa deed of trust, which would be priority. The other thing that this um, transaction does, it is going to amend the employment agreement. So now both Key Structures, Key Structures is going to remain responsible on the employment agreement, but it's also adding Adoba Pueblo. So now we're gonna have two entities responsible on and jointly and severally liable for any default on the employment agreement. Um, so that was in an effort to further protect the city. So we're still gonna have a letter of credit. Uh, we still have our deed of trust. We have another party that's now on the hook uh, for the employment agreement. Uh, just to let council know too, Key Structures is uh, in compliance when their employment agreement. So it wasn't like they did this because they were in default and and needed necessarily to do it. Um, they did it as a business choice, not because of any financial reason. They are up to date on all their um, employment uh, agreement obligations. So that concludes my, my staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions. And I'm not sure they, they said they might send someone to talk, so they might have someone um, here to talk about the transaction and about the company. Um, so.
Thank you for that report. And this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? We have one against. Was too late. No, I'm jacking with you. Hit your green button there.
Jonathan Downe, uh, thank y'all for allowing me to come up and talk. Um, I'm general manager for Abota. I was also previously the general manager uh, for Key Structures. Um, so we're very fortunate to be in this situation. Um, in mid-December, we found that we were um, wanting to make some different business choices and we ended up having to lay off seventy employees, you know, at the last minute and luck luckily we were fortunate enough that we have um, partnered up with a new entity and we're bringing jobs back. And um, so we're very excited. Um, it's been ten months in the making, working with Petco, with Ms. Ices, Mayor Graham's office, and there's been a lot of parties involved. So um, it's been a long road and we're hopeful that everything will be approved tonight and we're very thankful for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Think I may have went too fast. Is there anyone would speak in favor? Seeing none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Counselor Flores. Any questions? No questions? Let's call for the vote. It passes seven zero, it passes seven zero. Mister Clerk, we moved to item S quasi judicial proceedings, item S one. S one, an ordinance approving the North Vista Highlands filing number ten subdivision introduced October fifteenth, twenty twenty four by Counselor Roger Gomez. Thank you, Mister Clerk. We have a staff report?
Yes, Mister President and uh, council members. Of the applicant is requesting to subdivide thirty six point two seven acres into single-family residential lots, open space, park parcels, uh, generally located west of Cedarweed Boulevard and south of the fuse, future western extension of Home of Heroes Parkway. The proposed single-family residential lots meet the requirements of the North Vista uh, Highlands Plan Unit Development Lot Sizes, Lot Widths and Lot Setbacks. The North Vista PUD Development Guide includes extensive regulations uh, and guidance for park dedications to ensure that seven point five acres of park land is provided for each one thousand residents within the PUD development. The proposed neighborhood park in parcel D uh, containing one point seven three acres uh, will be developed with this subdivision and combined with the trails and open space parcels that are going to be dedicated exceeds the minimum requirement of one point seven acres uh, required for park areas within this subdivision. That concludes my report. President Aliff's staff requests that all documents from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding this matter, case number S twenty four oh two dated October ninth, twenty twenty four, be made part of the record of this hearing.
So ordered and thank you for that report. Is there anyone here? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Come on down. Please state your name.
Michael Cuppy with uh,
Yeah, do you swear firm that the testimony you shall give before the public city councils the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and your address for the.
Michael Cuppy, North Star Engineering, one eleven East Fifth Street, representing the applicant in this matter. I don't have a lot to add. Mister Hobson's report, he did a pretty decent job. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have. Uh, I just want to say that we've worked very diligently with city staff to make sure that this development meets all of their expectations uh, and meets all the required uh, requirements of the PUD that's already been recorded. Um, so it's the, the next four on your item will be a total of four hundred and forty-two lots. Now the developer is hoping to move forward to the construction as quickly as possible so he can add some more housing to the city. So with that, I conclude my presentation and be happy to answer any council's approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying there's no other testimony, this hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Latino, is there a second? Counselor Boston? Questions? Counselor Martinez?
Um, Mister Hobson, do we know, so what Mister Cuppy said about, you know, over four hundred units, are those gonna be market rate? Housing?
Um, the uh, housing that's been included in the other subdivisions within North Vista Highlands have all been market rate. We're not aware that there are any um, specific affordable housing units that are gonna be um, included, although they, they could, but they for everything that we've seen so far has been market rate.
And are those our ones over there for zoning or our twos?
Uh, all of North Vista Highlands is in a planned unit development zone district that has its own uh, development plan that's been approved through the Planning and Zoning Commission. So each time that we have a subdivision, it's compared to uh, the requirements of the planned unit development.
Of that PUD?
Yes.
Okay.
Counselor Flores?
Uh, as, as we keep heading north, uh, it, this is a little bit off the subject, but not much. I think it's important. Is anybody working on a plan to build a bridge from that area over to the Dillon to get back on I twenty five?
As part of the PUD, there is the um, vision of allowing or requiring uh, right away for Home of Heroes Parkway to extend to the western boundary of the property. We do not have a finalized alignment for a roadway that would cross over Fountain Creek and also over the railroad than the, the, the vision or the concept is to have a roadway that provides that connection and then links up to the Dillon flyover interchange area. One of the things that's uh, included in the annexation agreement for North Vista Highlands is a transportation impact fee, and this is one of the few developments that annexations where we have, have a specific impact fee for transportation that's charged and collected e- each time a residential building permit is issued. And so those funds, they certainly probably are not going to pay for a bridge, but they are gonna pay, could contribute towards a bridge and also for any other roadway improvements associated with the development of the roadway system outside of where, where our use would be for a bridge, but those, those fees will be used for potential improvements to Jerry Murphy, Vision Hills, which now has been renamed, and even for the, any of the uh, intersection improvements that would be required at Caesar Chavez uh, in Jerry Murphy and even down to uh, Dillon Drive. All those areas may have impacts when uh, North Vista Highlands is built out. So the, the answer is we don't have an exact alignment. It's in the plans to be looked at. What is the best way to be able to align that roadway? The biggest challenge is how to design and locate a bridge that works with the floodplain for Fountain Creek. And that's uh, there have been different proposals and different ideas and the distance across the creek and the railroad have been everything from eight hundred feet to uh, five hundred feet, depending on where that location, where that crossing might be placed.
Uh, isn't there a road that uh, extends from Baxter all the way around Beacon Hill or not maybe not that far that takes you to I twenty five without it, it seems like there is a way to get to I twenty five in that old Pueblo. It's called the Old Pueblo Road.
I think that's probably the, the Overton Road uh, alignment. Uh, and that, that's uh, still available and you can, you can uh, access I twenty five at Pinion. Um, is where the, where the connecting point would be at I twenty five, but that's mile marker one ten and uh, the uh, Dillon Drive is, I think, mile marker one oh four. So it's about six miles.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Counselor Maestri?
Sounds like that might not be in some of our lifetime. Um, but just um, for uh, out of curiosity, what's the minimum square footage for this area? For, for home?
Uh, the uh, the PUD doesn't really set a minimum square footage. Uh, those are set through the building code. Um, there are lots and uh, the lot sizes are set.
Mm-hmm.
The lot widths and the setbacks for the. the lot widths and the setbacks for the structures. They have, um, types of residential development, uh, whether it be single-family or townhomes or duplexes that are, uh, established within each of the different planning areas, but there is not a minimum square footage set in the zoning code. That would be more through the building code.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Martinez.
Uh, to Counselor Flores's question, would that alignment spot the CDOT's responsibility or the city's?
It would be the city's, uh, because it would be a local connection to, uh, to the state highway.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Unfortunately, it would be, it's, it's a, it's a local responsibility.
Any other questions? Let's call for the vote. Passes seven zero, Mister Clerk, item S three.
S three or S two?
S two.
S two, sorry, Mister Clerk. S two, an ordinance approving the North Vista Highlands filing number eleven subdivision introduced October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four by Counselor Roger Gomez.
Thank you, Mister Clerk. We have a staff report.
Yes, Mister President, council members. Just, uh, there are four ordinances. He just acted on the first one. There will be four subdivision ordinances related to North Vista Highlands. This is the second one, uh, from North Vista Highlands filing number eleven. Uh, the applicant is requesting to subdivide twenty-nine point six four acres located generally west of, uh, North Vista Highlands filing number seven and south of the future extension of Home of Heroes Parkway. They're proposing to create one hundred and five lots for single-family residences, parcels for open space, parks, and future development. Filing eleven, as I said, contains a hundred and five residential lots with widths between forty to sixty feet and areas of each lot between four thousand four hundred and nine thousand six hundred square feet. Parcels A, C, D, and E are reserved for pedestrian, trail, landscape, drainage, and open space. Parcel B is reserved for a park parcel. All lots meet the minimum width and area requirements of the North Vista Highlands Plan Unit Development Zone District. The North Vista PUD Development Guide includes extensive regulations and guidance for park dedications to ensure that seven point five acres of park is provided for each one thousand residents. The subdivision plat includes one point five-three acres of neighborhood park and the remaining point oh-five acres of park dedication will be provided through open space area. The park and open space parcels exceed the one point five-eight acres that's required under the standards of the PUD. That concludes my report. President Aleth's staff requests that all documents from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding this matter, case number S twenty-four oh-three, dated October ninth, twenty twenty-four, be made a part of the record of this hearing.
So ordered. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? I don't think you need to be sworn in again.
Thank you. Again, Michael Cuppy with North Star Engineering, one eleven East Fifth Street. Um, not a lot to add to Mister Hobson's report, um, other than all four filings, I'd say the total four hundred and forty-two lots, they range from a hundred to a hundred and thirty lots per filing. And the reason there's four filings is just for phasing, so we can break it up and build pieces of it at a time. So we can get some lots online faster than other ones. So be happy if any questions councilmen may have, and with that, I request your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying that there's no more testimony, I now close this hearing. Is there a motion to approve? Counselor Gomez, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Counselor Latino, any questions? Let's call for the vote. Passes seven zero, Mister Clerk, item S three.
S three, an ordinance approving the North Vista Highlands filing number twelve subdivision introduced October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four by Counselor Roger Gomez.
Thank you, Mister Clerk. We have a staff report.
Yes, President Aleth and council members. The applicant's requesting to subdivide thirty-seven point zero-one-five acres into single-family residential lots, open space, park, and future development parcels, generally located north of Castor Drive and south of the future western extension of Home of Heroes Parkway. The proposed subdivision divides the property into a hundred and twenty-four single-family residential lots, three parcels reserved for drainage, open space, pedestrian, trail, landscape, and par- and a park parcel. According to the PUD Development Guide, all parcels will be, all of the parcels, not the individual lots that will be developed, will be owned, developed, and maintained by the North Vista Highlands Metropolitan District. The proposed single-family residential lots meet the minimum three thousand six hundred square foot minimum area. The lots vary in size between approximately four thousand four hundred square feet and thirteen thousand nine hundred and thirty square feet with varying lot widths. The North Vista PUD Development Guide includes extensive regulations and guidance for park dedication to ensure that seven point five acres of park is provided for each one thousand residents within the planned unit development, uh, zone district. The proposed neighborhood park in parcel C containing one point five-three acres, which will be developed with this subdivision, combined with the trail and open space parcels that are part of this subdivision exceeds the required one point five-eight acres of required park area. That concludes my report. President Aleth's staff requests that all documents from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding this matter, case number S twenty-four oh-four, dated October ninth, twenty twenty-four, be made a part of the record of this hearing.
So ordered. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Course.
Just have to make sure you can see my face again. Michael Cuppy, North Star Engineering, one eleven East Fifth Street, nothing to add. Just be happy if any questions councilman may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying that there's no additional testimony, this hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve? Counselor Gomez, is there a second?
I'll second it. Go on.
Counselor Boston, any questions? Let's call for the vote. Passes seven zero, Mister Clerk, item S four.
S four, an ordinance approving the North Vista Highlands filing number thirteen subdivision introduced October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four by Counselor Roger Gomez.
Thank you, Mister Clerk. We have a staff report.
Yes, President Aleth and council members, this is the final ordinance on the North Vista Highlands subdivisions. Uh, the applicant is requesting to subdivide twenty-three point six one acres into one hundred single-family residential lots, drainage and detention parcels, open space, park, and future development parcels. Uh, this is generally located west of Cedarweed Boulevard and south of the future western extension of Home of Heroes Parkway. The proposed subdivision divides the property into one hundred single-family residential lots, three parcels reserved for drainage, pedestrian, trail, landscape, and open space. According to the Planned Unit Development Development Guide for North Vista Highlands, all parcels will be owned, developed, and maintained by the North Vista Highlands Metropolitan District. So those are the park, drainage, uh, and other parcels that I mentioned, uh, previously. The proposed single-family residential lots meet the minimum three thousand six hundred square foot minimum area identified in the PUD zoning. The lots vary in size between approximately four thousand four hundred square feet and nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-four square feet with varying lot widths. The North Vista PUD Development Guiding Guidelines include extensive regulations and guidance for park dedication to ensure that seven point five acres of park is provided for each one thousand residents. The trail and open space parcels, uh, in this subdivision exceed the required one point five acres that are required in the, in the PUD. That concludes my report. President Aleth's staff requests that all documents from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding this matter, case number S twenty-four oh-five, dated October ninth, twenty twenty-four, be made a part of the record of this hearing.
So ordered, and thank you for that report. This is a hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Last one. Michael Cuppy, North Star Engineering, one eleven East Fifth Street. Uh, I just want to thank council for your time and consideration on all four of these matters and be happy answering questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying that there's no other testimony? This hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Latino, is there a second? Counselor Gomez, any questions? Counselor Flores.
Um, I, I, I don't know how we missed this, but i- i- in section two uh, of this, I think all of them kind of read the same, don't they? The, the ordinances. Uh, are we, we're talking about a metro district here too, aren't we, with this development?
Correct.
Because I, I, I just wanted to be sure that I was reading this correctly. It says the acceptance of such dedicated streets, right-of-ways, utilities, draining, easements, public sites, et cetera, open spaces by the city does not obligate the city to maintain or repair. Same until such streets and rights of way, et cetera, are constructed and installed. So at some point, will there be another ordinance? So will we accept uh, the maintenance and repairs of the streets?
Well, yeah, and the, the streets will be at some point the obligation of the city to, to maintain the most of the park areas will be under the maintenance of the Metropolitan District. There are, what we identify in the planned unit development as community park areas, once those are developed and accepted by the city, those areas will be maintained by the city. Any of the regional trail connections that would follow through this development would be accepted and maintained by the city. Internal trails within the development would be maintained by the Metropolitan District. And the metro district, um, is actually, there are, I believe there are five separate metro districts that were approved. I'm thinking two or three years ago, but they're in existence currently.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Any other questions? Let's call for the vote. Passes seven zero, Mister Clerk, item S five.
S five, an ordinance designating one-one-five East Route Avenue, Pueblo Divine Science Church as a local historical landmark introduced October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four by Counselor Roger Gomez.
Thank you, Mister Clerk. We have a staff report.
Yes, President Aleth and council members. The applicant is requesting local landmark designation for the Pueblo Divine Science Church, formerly the Church of the Holy Trinity. It's located at one fifteen East Route Avenue in the Mesa Junction neighborhood. According to section four fourteen eight of the Pueblo Municipal Code, a building, object, monument, structure, or site may individually be designated as a landmark if it has distinctive character and meets the criteria listed in the code. Scott McMillan, the owner of the property, submitted the application and is representing the Pueblo Divine Science Church. The applicant hopes to obtain state historical fund grants for repairs, uh, after the designation. The application cites significance under three criteria in the Pueblo Municipal Historic Preservation Code. These are criteria one A, two A, and two C, uh, that are tied to the history and architecture of the structure. The application states that the structure represents one of Pueblo's significant early churches and the development of South Pueblo, as well as representing the work of Pueblo architect Walter T. Mordan, and showcasing the Gothic Revival style. Uh, the nomination only applies to the eighteen eighty-four church in addition and excludes the rectory owned by the church, uh, next door at three-oh-five Broadway Avenue. And I know we have representatives from the church that are here, that would be interested in testifying. That concludes my report. President Aleth's staff, uh, requests that all documents from the Historic Preservation Commission regarding this matter are HPC twenty-four oh-five and, uh, from the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, dated August twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, both uh, meetings, uh, and minutes, and the, and those documents should be made part of the record of this hearing.
So ordered. This is a hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Come on down.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you shall give before the Pueblo City Council is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and your address for the record.
Scott McMillan. I live in Florence, Colorado, but I am a member and a, uh, vice president, uh, vice president of the Board of the Divine Science Church. Okay, so anyway, it's kind of a celebration. I think this is our last meeting to, uh, get approval for, uh, our historic designation. We've been, uh, serving Pueblo for a hundred and fifty years as an active church, probably the, could be one of your oldest churches, uh, in the city. And looking forward to your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying that there's no other testimony, this hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Maestri. Second by Counselor Flores. Are there any questions? Counselor Martinez.
I, not a question, but a note that Counselor Flores and I were just creeping on the church and saying how beautiful it was. So it's gorgeous. That's all.
Any other questions? Let's call for the vote. Passes seven zero, Mister Clerk, item S six.
S six, an ordinance amending zoning restrictions to rezone six-thirty-four Goodnight Avenue from R two, Single Family Resident Zoning District to CCN Commercial Charter Neighborhood Zone District introduced October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four by Counselor Roger Gomez.
Thank you, Mister Clerk. We have a staff report.
Yes, President Aleth and council members. Six-thirty-four Goodnight Avenue is a three thousand, is a four thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight square foot former midnight church on a sixteen thousand five hundred square foot lot east of City Park in the Aberdeen neighborhood. The church remained in operation until twenty twenty-three, when the property was purchased by One Legacy Investments. The new owner would like to repurpose the building in its uses as a neighborhood serving a multipurpose center and a banquet hall. Banquet hall is not allowed in an R two, single-family residential zone district, which is a zone district that it currently is in, and is defined by the municipal code as an establishment which is rented by individuals or groups to accommodate private functions, including but not limited to banquets, weddings, anniversaries, and other similar celebrations. Such use may or may not include kitchen facilities or preparation or catering of food. The sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption is only, uh, during scheduled events and not open to the general public. And outdoor gardens and reception facilities are also included in the use. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property to a Commercial Charter Neighborhood Zone District. A banquet hall is a use by review in a CCN district. The applicant received approval of a special use permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals on March twenty-third, sixth, twenty twenty-four, uh, for a banquet hall with the condition that the business license for the banquet hall shall not be approved until the property was rezoned to into a CCN district, and a parking study was completed addressing any parking deficiencies identified in this, or identified by the study. In April twenty twenty-four, the applicant submitted a parking study completed by Gagliano Engineering, Inc., um, which identified eleven off-street and ten on-street parking spaces due to the size of the assembly area and its maximum occupancy of two hundred and twenty-eight individuals, rate of one parking space per four occupants of this site. rate of one parking space per four occupants of this site set up a requirement of fifty-seven parking spaces to comply with the code. On July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, the Zoning Board of Appeals approved a variance to reduce the off-site parking requirements on the condition that the rezoning, the, the application you're hearing tonight of the property from an R two to a CCN district was approved by City Council. Should City Council approve the rezoning of the property, the applicant will be able to legally obtain a business license and operate as a banquet hall at this location. That concludes my report. President Aleph's staff requests that all documents from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding this matter case number Z twenty-four oh four dated September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four be made part of the record of this hearing.
So ordered. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Come on now.
Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you shall give before the Pueblo City Council is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and your address for the record.
Casey Pruch, six three four Goodnight Avenue. I'm the general manager of Goodnight Event Center. I'm the representative trying to get it rezoned. I agree with everything in the staff report. The one thing I just wanted to point out and emphasize is that this was a church previously, so the, the use of the building for general assembly isn't changing at all. We're just asking a little bit more leeway on the events we can hold there. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance?
To be sworn in. Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you shall give before the Pueblo City Council is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Chris Doobie. I live at fifty-three twelve Manor Ridge Drive here in Pueblo. I am a entertainer, I guess you could say. It's a strange occupation, but I've been involved in a lot of the projects that have been going on at Goodnight Center, both charitable and entertainment-based. So I would like to attest to the quality of what they're doing. I've personally participated in some food drives for less fortunate families around the holiday seasons that people that run that have done. I've been involved in some theatrical productions, both film and stage, that have been utilizing that service. And I'd just like to attest to this character of the people involved and my opinion as a resident and homeowner and taxpayer here in Pueblo, that they're a force of overall good in our community. That's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying that there's no other testimony, this hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Boston, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Mastry. Any questions? Counselor Martinez?
Um, so this is my district. And I wanted to call out a little bit of what Mr. Hobson said. This rezoning, because it's, it's in a residential neighborhood, right? It's, it's right on Goodnight, right across the street from, you know, that kind of by Perkies, okay? It's in a residential neighborhood. The, per the purposes of the building, it requires fifty-seven parking spaces to comply with the code. Fifty-seven, okay? They only have eleven off-street parking and ten on-street parking. I say this because I've already received several complaints from people living in the district about this property, particularly because you have, it's a residential neighborhood. So you have families who are living right next to it, or, you know, like right behind it, who have little to no street parking. And because of the entertainment pieces that the gentleman spoke about earlier, it's really loud. And the complaints that I've received, that I've actually forwarded on to Chief of Staff McCain, have been about beer bottles getting found in yards, music playing, you know, really loud at night. I understand that it was a church at one point, but those activities are very different than a banquet hall that's going to be operational in the nighttime. So because of those reasons, because I've already received complaints about this property, I cannot support this rezoning at all. I, I ask you to consider particularly about their parking spaces and the fact that they're, you know, going to be selling liquor on site as well. That's a huge difference than, you know, a church operating, and now they can sell liquor on site.
Any other questions? Comments?
Any other alternatives?
Turn your mic on.
Are there any other alternatives that somebody's coming up with on how to deal with the parking? If they got it, what, ten on the street and eleven on the property, it's only twenty, they're shy thirty-seven?
Counselor Gomez, the they did make a request to the Zoning Board of Appeals to have a reduction in parking, and that was approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals to be able to have less parking than what the one space for every four occupants. So the choice on whether, and that decision was subject to the rezoning being approved, as well as the special use permit for the banquet hall. Both of those were on the condition that the property was rezoned to a Commercial Charter neighborhood.
It seems to me we gotta listen to your constituents once on the blue moon here and, and making this ruling over here is almost like the king saying a to the it's nuts to me. I think you're right on the money. I can't, I can't support this either.
Counselor Flores?
Is, do they have a liquor license at this point?
I'm, I'm not sure, Councilman Flores, but although the applicants, we could probably ask them that question.
It's, it's, if it's in this.
They don't have a liquor license.
Okay, so if they applied for one, does any of that, are the rules different in getting a liquor license for that facility?
So they would have to do the wants and the needs of the community, do a community petition for businesses and residents. So there would be a say, and then they could come to the hearing and testify for or against it.
What is the likelihood, I guess, that this is right smack in, in the middle of a residential area?
I've never experienced in that area, the closest probably would be the zoo. We didn't have any problems with that, but that wasn't really in the residential area. Some residents like it, some don't.
I believe Park East is a block away, right? Okay. Counselor Latino?
I, I would suggest that we have the, the two young men come up and respond to some of these questions themselves. I, I really think that they need to come up and respond to this.
Because this is a hearing, if you have specific questions of them, have them come up.
We've talked about the parking and other things. Come on, guys. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. President.
Could you reopen the hearing, please?
I'm now reopening the hearing, and Counselor Latino, you have a question?
My question is, fellas, you've heard the comments as it relates to the negativity of, of this plan of yours. So what are your responses to those comments?
The fifty-six parking spaces is calculated off the occupancy of two hundred and fifty-six of the building. I can show you guys the, the floor plans for the building. I actually brought them with me. Half, half that square footage is office space that's not intended for banquet use. With tables being set up for events, because nobody just stands around at a banquet, they do sit down. With tables set up, we're only able to fit about a hundred and twenty-five people inside that building comfortably. So the occupancy of two hundred and fifty-six and needing fifty-four parking spaces is a lot, excuse my hat here, is, is a lot more than actually how many people we intend to have banquets for. We're not going to let our guests have more than a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five people there, which means we're only short a few parking spaces, not the thirty-seven. This is why we went for a parking variance, which was approved by the by the Planning Commission or the Zoning Board of Appeals. Because parking, yes, is a concern, and that's why we applied for the appeal for it. But again, the, again, parking's based off of occupancy, occupancies based off of general square footage of the building. Only half our building is designated for banquet use, the other half is office space. I can pass around the plans to show you guys. I could show you the exact tables we have. We can only fit eight tables, eight or nine, ten top tables, so we can only fit ninety people in the banquet area. So there's no way we're going to be squeezing two hundred and fifty-six people inside that building. So we're not going to need fifty-six parking spaces. Banquets are usually held on the weekends. We fully intend to keep in, in, in compliance with sorry, for noise ordinance code. Yes, there is music being played outside. We're hosting a haunted house that funds our food drive and our toy drive that we do every year. Or not every year, since we acquired the building, we fed two hundred and fifty families last year. We gave over two thousand toys. Parking wasn't an issue then when families were lining up outside our building to get free toys from us. It's now going to be an issue when we hold a banquet two times a week on a weekend. That's really all I have to say. Again, I can show you guys the floor plans, how it would break down where people would actually sit and how you can only fit about a hundred and twenty-five people inside the building.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, I'm sorry. Another question I have is, have you spoken with the, the, the community itself? Have you visited each one of those, those neighbors? I mean, have you personally met with these people?
My boss has, and unfortunately, he wasn't, an emergency happened with his family, and he wasn't able to be here tonight, or he would be talking and saying he did speak to the neighbors. There's two neighbors specifically that have the issue with the parking, and they have, they have issues with people parking in front of their house, but they don't have issues with their guests parking in our parking lot. Right after I went to Planning Commission, one of my neighbors complained about parking. Literally the next day, he had four people in our parking lot. Why, why isn't he parking in front of his own house? But he can complain about our parking. So yes, we have spoken to our neighbors. There's really only two around us that have issues with the parking. One of their concerns was people blocking the alleyway. None of our guests blocked the alleyway. We tell them they're going to get towed, so they don't.
With the problems we have in this community with the homeless, I mean, I can, I can probably understand that that's some of the problem up there too. Again, I, I haven't been up in that area, but based on what you tell me, I, I'm not going to vote against this. I'm going to support you.
Thank you. Okay, the hearing is now closed. Do we need another motion? I don't believe so. Okay. Any other questions? I think it's important to note that, you know, we run through these processes and we're having a hearing tonight, and nobody from the neighborhood came to voice their displeasure and testify against this ordinance. I mean, that should hold some weight with us.
I should say, it's because it's ten eleven at night. A lot of the people that live in that neighborhood are either older or are new families. And so the people that I've taken complaints from, tho- those fit that, those demographics. And so perhaps they're not coming to a hearing at ten eleven PM because they have work the next day, because they have a baby at home. There's, there's a lot of different reasons. I know that there was opposition at the Planning and Zoning Commission. I know that there was opposition at the Zoning Board of Appeals. Just because they're not here tonight doesn't mean that there's no opposition.
Okay. Any other questions? Counselor Gomez?
Are there any other? Well, I guess you'd get a lot more, you got pre-complaints and you got post-complaints. Right now, we don't know what either is, but I can guarantee the complaints will come after this thing is set up, and it's not set up correctly. But are there any options in reference to some kind of shuttle or other ways to get this? Is it, they're only being held once in a while? It's not happening every day or every week? Has anything been considered about that instead of in front? If you put yourself in the place of councils, they have to make decisions based on what our constituents are asking us to do. Try to take that into account. But do you have any, have you thought about any of that stuff, or is it a possibility? And I know they do at the State Fair, and you're not going to be as big as the State Fair, but is, yeah. Can you do that?
No.
No, we can't come up, sorry. So how does that work? How, how do we alleviate that problem? That's just, I'm throwing that out. Does anybody have any ideas in reference to shuttles, or I don't know how that system works? Ask them to carpool.
You know, that's literally out of our purview. We're literally only considering whether we believe that this is something that we should approve as an ordinance. I don't know. Are we going to micromanage it into shuttle buses and all kinds of other things? I don't know. I mean, if you're not, if you're not for the ordinance, don't vote for it. Because you, you don't like it. If you're for it, vote for it.
Hate turning down businesses too. That's the other thing.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Counselor Boston?
How many emails did you receive in opposition, Sarah? If you could ballpark it.
I don't feel comfortable answering that. Like, I, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head. Chief of Staff McCain, how many times have I emailed you about this property? More than a few.
Received four phone calls from that too.
So it's been more than a couple.
Just curious.
And again, it's not just about the parking. It's, it's multifaceted. It's about the noise. It's about the drinking. It's about the, you know, it's, there's a lot of different factors, not just the parking.
How can they drink without a liquor license?
That's the first time I'm, I'm hearing about it, so I don't know.
Counselor Flores?
I'm wondering, the applicants, are they leasing that building, or do they own the building?
They can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they are the owners of the building.
And when you have, when, when you're saying that you are running a banquet hall, where do you cross the line between a banquet hall and a full-blown bar where you're serving, you've got entertainment, you've got liquor, and you're calling it a banquet hall? I mean, did anybody with the Zoning Board of Appeals ask that?
There are, there are definitions of, under the city zoning code for a banquet hall. And a banquet hall is a use by review under the Commercial Charter Neighborhood. And there are standard conditions for operation to hold those permits. So if there are violations of the conditions of the special use permit, the city has the authority to enforce non-compliance with those conditions.
You know, we've been talking about parking, and it, it appears that they've explained that they probably only need half of the amount of parking spaces because they, they can't use the entire building. It's just a portion of it. But even at fifty plus, when I think of a banquet, I, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking of at least a hundred people, maybe. It just doesn't seem like twenty-five slots you're going to have much of a banquet, unless they're very small banquets. I guess I'm just confused. I mean, it just seems like there must have been a lot more information on the Zoning Board of Appeals and the P and Z that we're, we're lacking. Because there's it just, and I know exactly where this place is at. It's right in America, right? There're just houses all around this place, a residential area.
So as part of the request for a variance for parking, there was analysis done, and that's included in your staff report, both the planning and zoning special use permit and the minutes in the staff reports for the variance for parking. And based on the information that was provided for by the applicants and the testimony in that hearing, the Zoning Board of Appealed, of Appeals approved the variance for parking, as well as the separately, the special use permit for a banquet hall.
Okay.
Any other questions?
And I just want to make sure, I want to reiterate, those approvals were on the condition that the rezoning is approved. The rezoning is not approved, then those the variance and the special use permit no longer valid.
Well, it brings another question. I, I thought the Zoning Board of Appeals was the last word.
In these cases, the variance for parking Um, in these cases, the variance, uh, for parking and the, uh, special use permit for the banquet hall were conditioned and subject to the approval of the rezoning by city council.
Okay, got it.
Any other questions? Call for the vote. It fails four three, Mr. Clerk, item S seven.
S seven, an ordinance amending zoning restriction to rezone thirty-two fifteen Lake Avenue located south of Pueblo Boulevard and west of Lake Avenue from I two industrial zone district to R six, multiple resident and commercial zone district introduced October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four by Counselor Roger Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, we have a staff report.
Yes, President Aleph and council members, thirty-two fifteen Lake Avenue is a seventeen point nine-three acre lot in the Lake Garden subdivision, south of West Pueblo Boulevard. It was originally developed as a dog track in nineteen sixty-two, held live greyhound races until nineteen ninety-nine. Currently, the dog track is closed and no commercial activity is on the site. Cooper Spur, Copper Spur, uh, Properties LLC is the owner of the property, they'd like to redevelop the property into a mixed-use development with multi-family residential, a hotel and commercial uses. The property is currently zoned I two, which does not support the proposed uses, so the R six zone district is being proposed which would allow these uses as uses by right. That concludes my report. President Aleph's staff requests that all documents from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding this matter, case number Z twenty-four fourteen dated September twenty-fifth, be made part of the record of this hearing.
So ordered. This is a public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give before the Pueblo City Council, the truth, uh, the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Please state your name and address for the record.
Jason Allwine, Matrix Design Group, twenty-four thirty-five Research Parkway Suite three hundred, Carls Springs, Colorado, eight zero nine two zero. Uh, representing the owner and applicant, uh, here, we have no, no further details to add on the property other than we're excited about the opportunity this project presents through redevelopment, uh, rehabilitation, uh, and get rid of some of the uses that are now, or, or some of the facility that's being kind of overrun by homeless and some, the vandalism. So we're excited about the opportunity and taking the next steps forward with, uh, future uses and development plans, happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying there's no more testimony, this hearing is now closed, is there a motion to approve? Counselor Gomez, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Boston, any questions? I'm really glad that, that, uh, that dog track is moving forward with something other than a dog, dog track and a simulcast, uh, simulcast deal, so that's exciting. Uh, any other questions? A simulcast. Are they bad? I swear I did. Any other questions, comments?
Uh, Counselor Flores? Is, is the, the first part, I mean, is, is the dog track gonna be raised?
Counselman Flores, my understanding is that they are planning on demoing the dog track and then redeveloping it with the new structures.
And, and I noticed there's a lot of construction, the Circle K is being built there and I don't know, do they have anything to do with that development, or is it just separate?
It's a separate development, although at some point there may be shared access to Pueblo Boulevard that may, may be shared from, uh, the dog track redevelopment and um, access from Circle K at least out to right in, right out turns on Pueblo Boulevard, but that's to be determined with their development plan.
And then is there, you've mentioned there's residential, uh, planning for residential, is that going out? Well, that would be southwest of, of the dog track.
Uh, the con- the conceptual plan that we've seen has like multifamily residential in that area that you just talked about.
And then also potentially a, a hotel or motel or?
Correct, and other, potentially other commercial sites.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, let's call for the vote. You have to vote. It passes six one. Mr. Clerk, item S eight.
S eight, an ordinance amending rezoning restrictions of Belmont Place Planned Unit Development combination of three zone districts, B three highway arterial business zone district, R two single-family residential zone district and R five multi-residential and office zone district introduced October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four by Counselor Roger Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, we have a staff report.
Yes, President Aleph and council members, um, the applicant is requesting to rezone the current one hundred and fourteen acre Belmont Place Planned Unit Development Zone District to a combination of three, uh, separate zone districts, B three for nineteen point seven seven acres. R two for thirty-eight point two one acres and R five for fifty-five point two nine acres. So if this rezoning is approved, it would dissolve the planned unit development zone district and then the pal property would be zoned into three separate zone districts. Uh, the subject site is currently unimproved and is located east of Troy Avenue and south of Caesar Chavez Boulevard, State Highway forty-seven. The area was annexed into the city in nineteen seventy-two and is identified as an urban neighborhood by the Pueblo Regional Comprehensive Plan. Property is currently zoned in the Belmont Place P U D. And that serves as the master plan for the development, uh, and that meets the requirements of the comprehensive plan. The rezoning would request the change of the northwest portion of the property parcel one, uh, to a B three highway and arterial business district, which would allow for commercial del- development in six large lots that are planned in Belmont Place filing one subdivision. This is the portion of the property that is closest to the intersection of Caesar Chavez and Troy Avenue. Uh, the R two zone, uh, zoning, which would be parcels two and four of the rezoning exhibit are proposed to be subdivided into non-buildable parcels A and C in Belmont Place filing number one. Proposed R two zone district is located south of the B three area, so it would be the areas farther south from the intersection of Troy and Caesar Chavez. Um, the R five zoning parcel three is in the eastern and central portion of the development site is proposed to be subdivided. It's non-buildable parcel B and, uh, the proposed zoning for the property, uh, closely mirrors the land use map that was approved in the amended P U D development guide that was approved in twenty twenty-one, so this is essentially taking the planned unit development zoning converted to standard, uh, zoning, but not necessarily really making any changes in the land use. It just allows for, uh, specific zone district requirements based on whether it's commercial um, residential or multi-family type development. That concludes my report. President Aleph's staff requests that all documents from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding this matter, case number Z twenty-three twelve dated February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, be made part of the record of this hearing.
So ordered. This is a public hearing, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance?
You swear and affirm that the testimony you shall give before the Pueblo City Council is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the adri- uh, record.
Joe Gaglano, Gaglano Engineering, seventeen forty, Ridge Boulevard, Suite one fifty. Um, this is the first part of another ordinance you're gonna hear tonight, but this is a, oh, as Mr. Hobson said, a, a rezone of a rezone of a rezone, uh, we've hammered this one. Through, I think we started this in twenty nineteen with re, uh, amending an existing P U D and then determining that we really didn't need the P U D, so we're just going to straight zone on this. And, uh, I don't really have much to add. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying there is no more testimony, this hearing is now closed, is there a motion to approve? Counselor Gomez, is there a second?
Second, yeah.
Counselor Latino, any questions? Let's call for the vote. Passes seven zero, Mr. Clerk, item S nine.
S nine, an ordinance approving the Belmont subdivision, filing number one, introduced October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four by Counselor Roger Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and we have a staff report.
Yes, this is the final land use staff report of the evening. The applicant is requesting to subdivide one hundred and fourteen acres into six commercial lots in two blocks and create four parcels reserved for future development. The proposed subdivision covers the area currently included within the Belmont Place Planned Unit Development. Property is currently unimproved and is located east of Troy Avenue and south of, uh, US Highway fifty bypass. That's not correct, should be Caesar Chavez. The applicant proposes to subdivide the property into six lots measuring eighty-one thousand square feet to two hundred thousand square feet for commercial development. Remaining ninety-one acres will be divided into four non-buildable parcels and ten acres of public right-of-way. That concludes my report, one of the, let me just, one of the reasons why this is, uh, being re-subdivided is that when they changed to the standard zoning to meet the requirements for those zone districts, it, uh, changed the alignment, uh, re- of, in the area required for public right-of-ways in those lots. And the reconfiguration of those lots have triggered this subdivision. So it's really a, almost more of a cleanup subdivision, uh, to allow for the uh, public right-of-ways and the sizes of the lots to be able to, uh, work with this subdivision. That concludes my report. President Aleph's staff requests that all documents from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding this matter, case number S twenty-two oh seven dated February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four be made part of the record of this hearing.
So ordered. This is a public hearing, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Uh, Joe Gaglano, again, um, just to reiterate what, uh, Mr. Hobson says, we we've basically just cleaned up some geometry of the roads on this, uh, version of the plat. To, to conform to the zoning, so. If you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying that there's no other testimony, this hearing is now closed, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Counselor Latino, is there a second? Counselor Maestri, any questions? Counselor Martinez?
Scott, with the four hundred uh, ordinances that we passed tonight, how many, um, future dwelling units are there in total?
I think I'll have to add those up and I can certainly send that through the mayor's office. Um, I know there were, uh, Mr. Cuppy indicated the number of units with, uh, North Vista, I think it was over four hundred units in North Vista, so this would be with Belmont Place, it would be, um, um, let's see if we have the actual unit number. I don't know if we really have an estimate, I can go back and I can send a email back to the mayor that can be circulated through council, but it's I think we're looking at well over five hundred new lots that would be plotted with these.
That would be great, thanks Scott.
Any other questions, let's call for the vote. It passes seven zero, Mr. Clerk, we move to emergency ordinance, ordinances? Item T one.
T one, emergency ordinance, amending ordinance number one oh five eight two to allow the mayor during declared temporary housing and shelter emergencies to authorize the property located at seven ten West Forestry to operate and as an overnight emergency shelter and s- uh, and suspending ordinances and regulations of the city in conflict therewith.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, we have a staff report.
Yes, thank you, President Aleph, members of council, Madam Mayor. Um, this is, is a, an emergency ordinance, this goes off the, uh, we have passed, I believe four previous emergency ordinances to extend the powers of the mayor to declare an emergency shelter areas. Um, this one will, uh, extend it to the property at seven ten West Fourth Street. Um, when the city reacquired this property, we were looking at the occupant, occupancy levels. And, um, because of the way that it's zoned, we weren't gonna be able to, uh, have occupancy that would make it feasible for a, an emergency shelter. So this one, um, allows the, the mayor to declare it as a assembly, which is the same that we're doing for all the other um, businesses, but extends the occupancy a little further, that was based upon the emergency, uh, shelter standards and, uh, fire codes, so the fire department went in and took a look at it, determined how many people could safely um, be housed and sheltered in there in emergency. And, um, so this is going to extend it to extend to that property. And this is done by an emergency ordinance because of the cold weather coming up. Um, but we're gonna be working with the fire department to look at some other businesses that may also qualify under this and, and propose a program to city council that's gonna come back, um, within the next few months. Um, so city council will be seeing that, but we didn't wanna do that by emergency ordinance. Um, so this will just extend it to the building at seven ten West Fourth Street. Um, and that concludes my report.
Thank you for that report. This is a public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Elvis Martinez and, uh, I hope I could get answers on these, so when it's open, I, I know last year that they had some kind of a hiccup with the unhoused people with dogs and other animals, probably maybe even cats, but probably n- nine out of ten with dogs, are those gonna be allowed on, on, on there, of course, probably with insurance, they would have to be in a crate if we have crates or in a se- separate room and everything. And with the amount, i- is there s- say thirty men and the nineteen women on, on that, or half and half? Or h- how does all of that work with the genders or just up to the forty-nine, thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying none, the hearing is closed, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Uh, Counselor Gomez made the motion to, or Counselor Boston made the motion to approve. They mumble down here and you can never hear, and Counselor Maestri, did you second it?
Second it, yes.
Okay. Any questions? Let's call for the vote. Okay, no, let's not call for the vote, we have a question.
I've always, uh, wondered why we have to call we have to give the mayor authority to call an emergency ordinance. Can't, can't we do that for a longer period of time without having to do this separately? Uh, and, and this is a little bit different, but I was, I still in the same deal. It seems to me that she should have the authority to do that.
But right now she has the authority to do it three hundred and sixty-five days a year, that was one of the previous ones that we had because there's other, uh, weather emergencies that we've had, other incidents that have created an emergency to, um, throughout the year, so it's not just during cold weather months, but it is an emergency shelter for all weather conditions, so it's year-round. Um, but that's also, it suspends, um, building codes. Um, but that's also, it suspends, um, building codes uh, during that emergency and allows a greater occupancy for those zoned. And so we don't want to do that year round. It's only for an emergency event.
No, I'm not talking about doing it. I'm talking about giving her the authority to have at least a year to be able to do that independently.
She, she can do it throughout the year.
No, it always comes to, it always comes to us as, as a, as a.
Well, we extended that for the entire year. I think was the last one that we brought before council. This one was simply because of the building. So it was, it was something unique.
Alright.
Any other questions? Let's call for the vote. Passes seven, zero.
Um, President Aleph, I'm going to need to recuse myself for a conflict of interest.
Thank you, Counselor Maestri. Uh, Counselor Maestri has recused herself. And we will wait till she gets out the door and then we'll move on to item U one. Mr. Clerk, item U one.
U one, a citizen filed an ethics complaint against Counselor Regina Maestri.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Gifford, we have a staff report.
Yes, Mr. President, members of council. On October fifteen, two thousand twenty-four, Jason Ford filed a verified ethics complaint against Counselor Regina Maestri, alleging she violated the code of ethics by failing to disclose a personal or private interest in a matter before city council and thereafter participated in the council vote thereon in violation of section one dash nine dash seven of the Public Minister's Code. Mr. Ford's allegations regarding Counselor Maestri are patently false and misstate the actual events. On January eighth, two thousand twenty-four, council passed ordinance one zero six three one, which transferred and appropriated thirty thousand dollars to project ED two three oh five for the replacement of the Pope Block Building Generator Roof membrane. This ordinance did not approve any contract, nor did it contemplate the awarding of a contract. Rather, it was just an administrative procedure. Over a month later, on February twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, council passed resolution one five five zero two, awarding a construction contract in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to Colorado Front Range Roofing. This resolution, resolution fifteen five oh two, was placed on the agenda as a separate item, much like this item U is tonight. And Counselor Maestri requested to be excused from the meeting prior to the vote on the resolution due to a potential conflict of interest. Additionally, Mr. Ford misreads the code of ethics by alleging Counselor Maestri acted in a way to economically benefit a business in which her family has substantial financial interest. Uh, for this proposition, he speciously cites section one dash nine dash twenty PMC. However, that section of the code deals with fraternization and nepotism regarding intra-office relationships, uh, among staff, this mainly. For the reasons stated and pursuant to section one dash nine dash thirty PMC, it's the opinion of law of, law department that Mr. Ford's complaint dated October fifteen, two thousand twenty-four fails to state a claim and should be dismissed. That is the end of my report.
Thank you for that report. I need a motion to accept the communication. Counselor Gomez, is there a second? We have a second by Counselor Boston. Any questions on accepting it? Let's call for the vote. Will you clear it? Yeah. This is a vote accepting the communication. One more time. Passes six, zero. Now it's left up to us. We have two choices, whether to investigate or dismiss. Is there a motion for either?
I move that we dismiss this ethics complaint against.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Flores to dismiss and Counselor Latino, a second to dismiss. Let's call for the vote. Passes six, zero. Want to remind everybody, if you're ever out looking for a pet, please utilize the animal shelter, Paws for Life or any of the, the nonprofits that we have in town that take good care of, uh, our lost pets. And please, if you do adopt a pet, make sure that they're spayed and neutered and get one of those chips so we can find them when they get lost, if they ever do get lost.
I was never spayed and neutered.
We are adjourned.
Thanks.
We're gonna step up first thing.